I'd like to call to order the November 2019, sorry, 2018 regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council. Roll call, please.
Cole?
Here.
MEMS?
Here.
Sully?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Yes, here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Throgmorton?
Here. Good evening, friends. Welcome to your city hall. It's cold out there, but I have bad news to get tell you. Winter is coming. So, yeah, there's that. But on a different note, before we proceed, I want to take a minute to honor former mayor Darrell Courtney, who died several days ago. Born in 1949, Darrell graduated from the University of Iowa in 1972 with a degree in business administration. Degree in hand, he began a 49-year career in business, especially as a financial advisor, and became a prominent leader of the local business community. He kept very active outside the workplace, too, by committing time and energy to organizations such as the J.C.'s, Eagles Lodge, the Coralville Food Pantry, and First Christian Church, many others, too. For many years, Darrell also played a very significant role in local government. He served on our Planning and Zoning Commission. He served on this city council for two terms, from 1985 to 1993, and he served as mayor of Iowa City from 1992 through 1993. While mayor, Darrell had, I don't know, the opportunity to oversee relief efforts during the Great Flood of 1993. I don't know if y'all were here then, but it was a pretty significant flood event for our city. On a personal note, I can say I served on the council for two months at the end of 1993 with Darrell, and I can recall engaging in really stimulating conversations with him about what ultimately became the drinking water plant that's just north of town and provides really good drinking water for us. I also ran into him just a few weeks ago and enjoyed listening to him ask questions and talk about what he was doing. I had no idea whatsoever that he was very ill and was shocked to learn that he died. So his presence will be missed, but his impact on our community will endure for years to come. Our thoughts go with Darrell's wife, Cynthia, and their two sons, Brandon and Nathan. Moving on to a much more enjoyable topic, Student Leadership Awards for two terrific students from Horace Mann Elementary, including my neighbor Eleanor Decker and Tommy June Simmons. Okay, I said that...
It should be on.
Hello? Yeah. So I said that Eleanor Decker is my neighbor. That's literally true, but I had no hand whatsoever in being the person giving her, signing the award to her. So, what we're going to do, young ladies, is I'm going to ask you to read your speeches, and then I will read the awards for you. You can look at me if you want to. It's okay. Yeah, so then I'll read the award that is identical for the two of you, except it has your name on your award and your name on your award. Okay? So, let's start with you, Eleanor. Can you read your speech, please?
My name is Tommy Jen Simmons.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's really embarrassing. After I talked to you out here and I've misremembered your names, anyhow.
My name is Tommy Jen Simmons.
I'm a sixth grader at Horace Mann. Thank you for this opportunity to be here and to the teachers and staff at Horace Mann for supporting me through the years. Special thanks to Fallon for teaching me kindness in preschool by scratching my back at night time, to Ms. Cabrera for teaching me about diversity, to Ms. Ostgard for teaching me how to be caring to nature and people, a shout-out to Ms. Stigemeyer for bringing people together through music, to Mr. Brown for helping me persevere through Pacer tests, to Ms. Nelson for teaching me to be responsible, respectful, and caring man mustang, and to Ms. Pribble for helping kids become leaders in student council. I'll never forget my fifth-grade teacher, Mr. Kemp, for teaching me about the Civil War and encouraging me to use my voice in peaceful protests against gun violence. Thank you to Ms. Robinson for modeling the importance of working hard every day. Each of these wonderful people, along with my family and friends, helped me become the person I am now. I'm involved in student council, safety patrol, book scouts, and I play piano. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Ms. Stigemeyer, I remember her. Ms. Nelson, I know her very well. Mayor Kemp, he's the mayor of Hills, Iowa? Yeah, really fun. Okay, now it's your turn.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Eleanor Decker, and I'm a sixth-grade student in Ms. Dahlman's class at Horace Mann Elementary. I feel a great sense of privilege at being selected to receive this award. I hope you can all agree that I'm a helpful and dedicated student who always tries her best. I am a member of the student council, bringing fresh new ideas to my fellow students. I'm also a member of Book Scouts, a program started by our librarian to help motivate readers school-wide. I'm a member of the design committee, creating inspiring and colorful displays that encourage reading. I hope you can all agree that I'm a qualified student to receive this award. It's been a humbling and meaningful experience. Thank you.
Very nicely done. Okay, so I'm going to read Eleanor's first, but the text is identical, right? So, Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Horace Mann Elementary, as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize Eleanor Decker as an outstanding student leader. Your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, November 2018, signed by me. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. All right. And Tommy? Here is yours, exactly the same, except it says Tommy John Simmons. Is it Simmons or Simons?
Uh, Simmons.
Simmons, okay. Congratulations. All right. Sorry, Rob, for my mistake, but so I know there's at least one proud parent right there and a few others. And over here, I know there's some proud parents as well. So brilliantly done. Keep up the great work at Horace Mann and wherever you go after that. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. We can move on to Consent Calendar, which is items four through eight.
Proclamations.
It's not a good night for me. Yes, item three, proclamations. So this has to do with UNESCO City of Literature Day, and I've asked Rockne Cole to read this proclamation because Rockne is a member of the City of Literature's Board of Directors. Rockne?
Thank you, Joe. Whereas the City of Iowa City was granted the City of Literature designation by the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, UNESCO, on November 20, 2008, becoming the third city of literature in the world and the only such city in the United States at that time. And whereas Iowa City celebrates its 10th anniversary as the City of Literature of 180 members of UNESCO's Creative Cities Network and one of 28 cities of literature around the world, and whereas the city and the City of Literature organization over the past 10 years have grown our literary culture through programming like the Iowa City Book Festival, the One Book, Two Book Children's Literature Festival, the Music IC Chamber Music and Literature Festival, and has creased Iowa City's stature around the world through collaborative projects with other cities and through hosting the Cities of Literature in April 2018 for that group's annual meeting. And whereas Iowa City continues to lead the world of literary culture through institutions like the University of Iowa Writers Workshop, Prairie Lights, Iowa City Public Library, the Iowa City Literary Walk, and the many writers who have called our city home. Now, on behalf of Mayor Jim Throgmorton, we hereby declare that Iowa City will observe on November 20, 2018, UNESCO City of Literature Day. We urge all citizens to take part in the mission of UNESCO City of Literature, which seeks to connect readers and writers through the power of story. John?
You going to say a few words, John? All right. I'd be shocked if you didn't.
Get me a live mic. Well, thank you very much to the council and to city staff for helping to make this possible. It's really hard to believe that it's been 10 years. But that said, I, a lot of times when I'm asked about our designation, tell people that Iowa City was always a city of literature. It just took UNESCO a while to figure out, to give us that title. We have such a rich and vibrant literary culture here in Iowa City, and our organization, while a lot of folks think of us as being the City of Literature, we simply represent and manage that designation on behalf of you folks and the city. Everyone in the community should feel like they are a part of the life of the City of Literature and hopefully take part in all of those cultural endeavors and all that we have here in that rich literary tradition. So with 10 years under our belt, I feel we've done some amazing things, have grown our events that we run and have seen many other organizations start and continue to grow, taking advantage of this and leveraging that designation. And I look forward to what we're able to do with all of you and everyone watching tonight over the next 10 years. So thank you again, and happy anniversary.
For anybody who's watching, plus those of you in the audience, I'd just like to say John Kenyon does a superb job as Director of the City of Literature. I've observed him both as a member of the Board of Directors and as mayor and involved in various activities with John. Keep it up, John. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, now I get a chance to do the consent calendar. So we'll move to item four, items four through eight, which is the consent calendar. Could I have a motion to consider adoption of the consent calendar as presented or amended, which means minus item 8J, which will be deferred?
So, second.
Moved by Sully, seconded by MEMS. Discussion. Would anybody like to address any of these items? Like, I think maybe somebody here came to be able to say something about item 8D, but also item 8J. So if you came for that reason, please feel free to come up. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Marie Kendrick, and I'm here representing the Iowa City Deer Friends. We're a group within that group, dedicated and local individuals who have no invested interest but to keep the wildlife free and protected while living in close proximity with human establishments. We have sent a lengthy letter this past week detailing our research and findings regarding the methods of controlling deer populations, and through our research, we're realizing that there's overwhelming evidence that the best path forward is to explore non-lethal means of control. In particular, we're interested in doing more exploration with the sterilization of members of the Iowa City herd. Non-lethal methods are also preferred course of action for the over 500 concerned citizens that signed the online petition that we submitted previously. We're able and willing to coordinate the efforts towards sterilization project as well as public education campaigns, and we would really like to work as an ad hoc committee that might advise the council on this topic, and we earnestly hope that we hear communication back from some of you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm George Burgess, and I live on Whale Street. And I imagine some of you don't know where it is. It's one block long, comes from Court to Friendship. And last month, we received a letter saying that the city wanted to have only parking on one side of our street. We have a narrow street, and certainly understandable. We do have a problem. Several years ago, actually probably a decade ago, we got a letter from the city saying that we needed to park more carefully, and we parked more carefully. The trouble is, people were parking in such a way that city utility trucks and things like that couldn't get through, but we paid attention. But there's been a lot of turnover in our neighborhood, and newer people don't realize that they need to be more careful. The other thing that occurs on Whale Street, because between Court and Seventh and Friendship, a lot of places where there is no parking, people enjoy our street for parking, not only during the day or at night, but on a vacation. They'll leave their truck there, their pickup truck, their trailer. And it would seem that the problem, which the city has identified of our street being really congested, doesn't have to be settled by one-side parking, but just reminder that we need to be more careful and also better surveillance of trucks and trailers that are left there for more than 48 hours. Thank you.
Thank you, George. I would like you to know that we deferred action on item 8J, which means the topic you just discussed, and during our work session, we decided to instruct the city manager and staff to do pretty much what you have asked us to do, but we'll see how well it goes.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll turn to item nine, Community Comment.
We need to vote.
We didn't vote, but during the discussion, I was just trying to give the chance for the public. I forget to mention item 8C, Mary Graffit Traffic Light at Washington and Lynn. I don't see, like, staff respond on that, and I don't know. I guess, do you have any idea?
We considered a traffic light at Washington and Lynn during the Streetscape Project on Washington Street, and the council had some discussions on that and ultimately decided not to put the street signals in there.
Yeah, but I think, you know, like, people start saying there is many accidents. I don't know how many accidents. I don't know, like, one of them, you know, I don't know anything about it. But if she's saying, like, there is many accidents has been happening there, I really would love to see the data, if there is an accident there, how many, and if we really would like, we should consider, we should consider it, because the safety of the people is a priority. And I don't know if I, one of those council, I don't know, but, you know, since people are sending letters saying that this is serious, we have to look into it again. If you can provide us with the data about accidents, yeah.
Sure.
I think Mary did state there have been several near accidents.
Near accidents, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else?
And also say, talk about the senior center, and I guess other people, we need to look into that, too, yeah.
Okay, hearing nothing else, roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes, motion carries seven to zero. All right, now, item nine, Community Comment. This is the moment when anyone who would like to address any topic that is not on the formal meeting agenda can come up and speak. Please, when you do come up, please state your name and let us know what's on your mind. And please don't, do not take more than five minutes. I'll keep track of that. Good evening, Rick.
My name's Rick Weber. I'm here to represent the Senior Citizens Commission. I am instructed to inform you that we are watching you, so you can watch us, and that's about it. Thank you much.
Good enough. Anyone else? Good evening, Brandon.
Brandon Ross, man. All right. Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to all council members, and Mr. Teague, your first council session, nice to see you. And I was thinking about what is Thanksgiving for us, and I'd like to think that we would include, maybe even put in a perimeter, that basically hospitality, you know? Several hundred years ago, the Native Americans were very hospitable to these very strange people who came across the ocean, and we think about that moment. So in the thought about that moment, I just would like to pass this on to you guys. This land is your land. This land is my land. From California to the New York Island. From the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream water. This land is made for you and me. As I went walking that ribbon of highway, I saw above me that beautiful sky. I saw below me that golden valley. This land is made for you and me. In the center of Iowa City, in the shadow of the steeple, I saw my people. Some were in the unemployment line, boy, some were hungry, and they asked this question, is this land made for you and me? This land is your land. This land is my land. From California to the New York Island. From the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream water. This land is made for you and me. Boys, I went walking, I saw a sign there, and on that sign there, it said, no trespassing. But on the other side, it didn't say one darn thing, 'cause this land is made for you and me. This land's for black lives. This land's for white lives. It's for Latinos. It's for the Muslim, to Chinese, Korean. Are you from New Zealand? This land is made for you and me. That's one more time. This land is your land. This land is my land. From California to the New York Island. From the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream water. This land is made for you and me. This land is made for everybody, no matter what color your skin, no matter how much you have in your wallet, especially if you've got nothing in your wallet, no matter what flavor of ice cream cone you like when you go, this land is made for you and me. God bless you.
Would anyone else like to sing or say something to us? Yes, ma'am.
That's kind of hard to follow up.
Brandon had it going there.
Yeah. So my name is Catherine Strandell. I'm actually, I do not live here in Iowa City, unfortunately, but I am a new transplant. I live in Iowa City, and I volunteer for the Brain Injury Alliance of Iowa, and I do facilitate a support group here in Iowa City. We meet twice a month. We do one just for general support and also one for general recreation for survivors and caregivers of those who have survived traumatic brain injury. And at our last meeting, which was last Monday, an issue came to my attention that I thought that I would want to address this council, and it has to do with accessibility of parking garages. Now, my understanding is that there are enough parking spaces that is ADA compliant, and that is not my concern. However, evidently what's going on is the automatic counters, once all the parking spaces are full. They do not count the handicap parking spots at all, and several of my members have commented to me that in the past, they could clearly see that there were available parking, but they were unable to get past the gate because the automatic counters don't count the handicap-accessible spots, so they were unable to utilize those spots and to engage in the community activities that they desire. So I was just hoping I could ask just some clarifications, because I do want to advocate for the members that I support. Could you give me a name of whoever you guys subcontract with for your parking garages, or what are the steps that I can take to advocate for change for that?
Yeah, if you want to give your contact information to Simon here, we'll follow up with you and work with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Seeing no one else, we'll turn to item 10, which is Planning and Zoning Matters. Item 10A, Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center rezoning. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 5.82 acres of property located at 1914 South Gilbert Street, 1805 Waterfront Drive, 260 306 and 346 South Gate Avenue, from intensive commercial CI-1 to neighborhood public P-1. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening, Danielle.
Good evening, Mayor. Danielle Setzman, Development Services Coordinator, NDS. As you stated, this is a request for rezoning of property generally located on the northwest corner of South Gate Avenue and the Crandic Railline between South Gilbert Street and Waterfront Hyvee Store south of Highway 6. The property is currently privately held, and as I'm sure you're aware, is under a purchase agreement for Johnson County for development. The property is currently zoned an intensive commercial district, which is typically intended for the provision of commercial uses that require or characterized by outdoor display and storage, repair, and sales of large equipment or vehicles or commercial operations conducted in buildings not completely enclosed. The proposed rezoning is to a neighborhood public zone, which is a zoned district applied to properties owned by either the city, the county, or the Iowa City Community School District. The rezoning, as I said, is requested to allow for the establishment of a new Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center, which is intended to treat patients experiencing behavioral health crises and connect them with necessary services. The center will provide crisis observation and stabilization, substance abuse treatment, and act as a low-barrier winter shelter. The applicant is here tonight, so I'll leave the description of those services to him if you should have questions. I'll just move on to the items regarding the rezoning. Principally, we look at the intent of the comprehensive plan when we investigate or may comment on rezoning applications. In this case, the comprehensive plan and the future land use map there identifies the area as appropriate for commercial. More specifically, the South District Comprehensive Plan designates it also as commercial. It's important to identify, though, that in our comprehensive planning efforts, we do identify a zone for public and semi-public designations of land uses, but we don't try to anticipate where those would go. In our future land use map, those are generally just showing existing facilities. We concede that public uses are needed throughout the community and therefore generally considered consistent with all used land designations in the comprehensive plan, and we address them as they come up. The proposed use would not... The proposed use would not, not even considering the ownership of it, the proposed use combines office and institutional uses and aligns with the commercial land use designation generally, which would contemplate a large variety of commercial uses for the property. There are some photos here of the existing site back when it was green outside and perhaps going to storm on us. It's generally a flat site, open area, surrounded by some development. In this picture, you can see an aerial image of the site outlined in red. It is bounded by South Gate, Waterfront Drive, Crandic, and the South Gilbert Street. The site is primarily accessed off of South Gate Avenue. The applicant is also looking to make a connection across the Crandic Line so that they can access the site from the northeast corner. The site has been planted in the past in 2007, and it has had some stormwater management facilities already installed on it. The applicant is looking to provide another access, as I said, across the Waterfront Drive or the Crandic Line to provide them with access even during a flood event such as we had seen in 2008. Just generally speaking, there are transit bus routes in the general vicinity of the site as well, so it can be accessed through a bus service, and there is an existing sidewalk on South Gate Avenue. As I mentioned, the flood, this is in a flood zone. It does have both 100 and 500-year floodplain designations on it. Because of that, and because of the nature of the use of the property, the city has recommended, or staff and the Planning Commission are recommending a condition that development of the site comply with our floodplain management ordinances as it relates to Class 1 critical facilities. These are facilities that by their nature would be difficult to, if there were a flood, difficult for them to be evacuated in that case. We would recommend and have recommended a condition to addressing that. The applicant has also acknowledged these requirements, and it intends to address those at the time of site plan development so that the site can be adequately protected in the case of a flood, both from raising certain areas as needed and making sure there's ways to evacuate the site. In investigating the area, our sensitive areas, the ordinance also indicated that there may be the potential for archaeological resources to be on the site. So there is also a staff recommended and Planning Commission recommended condition regarding further investigation of that to ensure that if there are any sensitive areas, that they are addressed. That condition has actually since been also addressed by the applicant. They have hired a consulting firm to conduct the required archaeological investigation, report out to the state archaeologist, who has agreed with their conclusions, that no further investigation is actually recommended based on that follow-up survey. So coming before you tonight is a recommendation from the Planning Commission for approval of this application rezoning with two conditions. As I said, first, compliance with the requirements for Class 1 critical facilities per the city's floodplain management standards, and also prior to any site disturbance on the property, receiving that approval from the state archaeologist. The applicant has held a Good Neighbor meeting in early November. They had one person attend and had questions, but no comments that they felt needed to be addressed further. That will conclude my staff report. Happy to answer any questions. And as I said, the applicant's here tonight.
Thank you, Danielle. Danielle, do you have any questions for Danielle, folks? Thanks. Would anybody else like to address this topic? Good evening.
Good evening, guys. Matt Miller, project manager for Johnson County. I'm happy to answer any additional questions you guys may have about the facilities, what kind of services will be there, anything along those lines.
Looks like you're getting all scot-free.
Excellent, thank you.
It's a good sign.
All right. No one else? All right, so I need to ask you, council members, if you are inclined to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, which was to approve this rezoning. If not, we would continue the public hearing to allow for consultation with the commission. So are you inclined to support the rezoning? Yeah, okay. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move first, consideration.
Second.
Move by MEMS, second by Taylor. Discussion. Go ahead, Susan.
I'm just thrilled to see that we've finally gotten to this point. It took a little longer than we had hoped to get all the signatures with people spread across the globe, but we're there. I think, you know, staff had some concerns in planning and zoning, and we've got those addressed. And as I mentioned earlier in the work session, everybody involved with this project, from our executive committee, to our steering committee, to all the other peripheral people who were getting a lot of assistance from the university, donation of staff time, that's been just absolutely crucial to this project moving forward. And so we're, everybody's really excited to see some key things done, and this is one of them. After I toured the San Antonio facility some time ago, I could see that there was really, truly, an urgent need in this area for a center like that. And I know that it can be of help to individuals that are in distress. So I'm very much in favor of this and hope it happens as soon as possible.
I just want to give my kudos to everyone that was involved in this particular process. You know, in council, we get a lot of feedback about various things that we should be doing. And I think what this process shows is a simple idea that took years of hundreds of hours of professional time to envision, to find the location, to address one basic need, which was, prior to this center, and we still don't have this, is if you had a mental health emergency, there were really only two options for a lot of our law enforcement, either to take you to jail or to take you to the emergency room. And what this is really going to do is give us that third option that does not involve, to the extent that we can, jail or the emergency room, freeing up our critical emergency room resources, and at the same time, giving people the help they need in a structured environment where they can thrive. And I think the time, Susan, that you've put into this over these last couple of years, a lot of the meetings, it's just, it's just an honor to be even just a small part of this, even though we don't really deserve any of the credit, except for Susan, you do. All of you out there that have done the legwork is just really incredible. It's amazing. This is huge news. Balloons should be coming out of the ceilings. This is huge.
You know, saying that, Rockne, I want to go back and mention one person who's no longer in the community, and that's Jessica Peckover.
Sure.
Jessica was hired by the county, working on jail alternatives and trying to find ways to decrease the jail population. And she, she was absolutely instrumental in getting involved and kind of connecting us with the crisis intervention training for our law enforcement. And Johnson County picked up on that and started sending some of their deputies down to San Antonio for the training. Iowa City PD and other local law enforcement did the same thing. But it also became apparent that that training was only the very first piece of the puzzle. Like you said, Rockne, once you do that crisis intervention, you learn to de-escalate. You need someplace to take these individuals that are in crisis, other than the jail or the emergency room, assuming they don't have to have those kinds of services and/or confinement. And so, you know, as you mentioned, Pauline, and I was down there as well, the, a lot of us went down and saw the facilities in San Antonio. But we would be remiss if we did not publicly say thank you to Jessica, because Jessica was really, really, the big start of all of this. A lot of us have been involved since then, but she was, she was critical. And to really helping us bring that crisis intervention training to Iowa City. After we'd been going down there for about two years for training, a lot of us were like, we're spending all this money down, you know? I think the trip I went on, there was 10 or 15 non-law enforcement people just to kind of see what was going on. It was like, we need to bring this back here. And she was instrumental in help us, helping us get the training started back here. I think we've run five or six trainings since then, and I think now we're down to maybe two a year, because I think we've pretty much got Johnson County law enforcement trained, but we also take people in from outside.
Will we be the first in the state to do this type of facility?
Well, last year, the state legislature passed legislation, basically to set up six access centers across the state. One of the things we've been discussing a lot is that it's important that this facility is designed to meet those requirements of the state, particularly as that might allow for funding and fitting in with various regulations. But we also may very well go above and beyond that. Those are, those are lots of the questions and discussions that we are having. And when I say "we," what I really should say is the people who are the providers that have the medical expertise, which I sure don't have. So I stay out of those discussions, because it's very, very complex. Some of those rules and regulations still have not been finalized at the state level. So people from, you know, from Chrissy Canganelli at Shelter House, to Ron Burg at Prelude, to representatives from Abbey and Abbey Health, and I'll be forgetting some, Matt, but we have a lot of providers who are involved in this, and a lot of the county staff as well, who really understand these mental health rules and regulations, are really working through this. So one, we make sure that meets the state definition of an access center. We make sure that, you know, we have all the licensing and certifications that are needed. They're having to fill, figure out how the billing is going to be done with multiple providers. During the work session, somebody made the comment, maybe it was you, Jim, about all the intricacies. There are tons of intricacies that various committees are working on. So this rezoning is one piece, but what we really see is, is kind of two things working in tandem now. The physical facility will be going, and at the same time, we will be working on the governance structure and all those different kinds of technical aspects of billing and how we provide the care and who does it and how they contract, et cetera. So we're excited. I'm glad the council's supportive, and we're, we've got our fingers crossed for maybe 18 months from now, opening the doors. So. As a side note, when I was in San Antonio, they apologized greatly for taking Jessica away from us.
I should have. Oz, Bruce? No?
I just really, I want to, you know, second what Rockne and Susan said, and thank you to everyone, and thank you, Jessica, also. And thank you to everyone who involved in this. I just can't wait to tour that building.
I mean, it's huge for our community, just the mental health really being taken serious by so many different municipalities, all working together to make it possible. So thanks to everybody involved.
Yeah, well, people have already said most of what's important. I'll just repeat a few words. De-escalation, crisis intervention training.
Yes.
Data-driven justice analysis. The Housing First Facility. Reduction in jail overcrowding. A few, just a few years ago, the average number of beds at the jail was about 185. Right now, it's around 90. And I don't think all, not all the credit for that can go to Jessica's efforts and all these other related efforts, but it's a huge part of it. These efforts are a huge part of it. So that's a dramatic difference. And I think it's playing, these, these are major changes rippling through our city and rippling through our police department, rippling through the justice system here, all to the better for the people of this city.
And the county.
And the county, thank you. And I couldn't be prouder. And, you know, we cannot claim all the credit, we cannot claim most of the credit, we can't do any of that. But we're playing our role, and I couldn't be prouder of everybody on this council, staff, of course Jessica, and everybody else involved.
And we'll be making a significant financial contribution to the building as well.
Yep. Any other comment? If not, roll call, please.
MEMS?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Frog Martin?
Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
Wolf?
Second.
Move by MEMS, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10B, rezoning at 4643 Herbert Hoover Highway. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 5.49 acres of property located at 4643 Herbert Hoover Highway, from interim development multifamily residential IDRM to medium-density multifamily residential RM20 and low-density multifamily residential RM12. I'll open the public hearing. Danielle again.
Thank you, Mayor. Danielle Sitzman, NDS. This is a rezoning tonight for the property described as 4346 Herbert Hoover Highway. The applicant in this case is Iowa City Housing Group LLC. The rezoning is from interim zoning district designation assigned to the time of the property was annexed into the city in 2017, to a combination of multifamily residential districts to allow for development of an affordable housing community. This project, at least the first phase of this project, has already received state low-income housing tax credits, or LITEC, from the Iowa Finance Authority. Additionally, it has funding from the Housing Trust Fund and from the city of Iowa City. The property on this exhibit is that outlined in white. The property has two current interim zoning districts assigned to it. Interim zoning is applied at annexation, as I said, really just as a placeholder to allow for some limited use of the property until it can be fully serviced with city services. This rezoning contemplates that city services are, will be, and will be able to be provided to the property. Public Works has worked with us to evaluate those. They've asked for some studies regarding water pressure, but otherwise, the property is able to be converted to city services through redevelopment. This shows the various zoning districts requested and essentially the phases of the project. In red and green are the two phases that are subject to the rezoning tonight. The first phase, Phase A, is approximately three acres, shown in red. The second phase, Phase B, is in green, and it's approximately two additional acres. Phase A would be rezoned through this action to RM12, Phase B to RM20. Both of those districts allow for both single-family and multifamily development at different densities. The intention, as I said, is for redevelopment of a multifamily community on these properties. In the future, the applicant has indicated they may wish to rezone the darker, or the blue section here in a future action, but as I said, that is not part of the request tonight. The applicant is here tonight, and they will present some information about their, the specifics of their development, and can answer questions for you about the mix of units. Since it is a LITEC project, they have gone through that process, and they do have some requirements that that program requires of them. They have conducted their Good Neighbor meeting. Again, a little bit of overview of the project, just the various phases. And I will get to that a little bit more as we look at the plan. Again, since this is a rezoning, we do an analysis of the comprehensive plan intentions for this property. In our future land use map, the comprehensive plan is identified for residential development. The rezoning requested would exceed the dwelling units called for in the comprehensive plan. However, our comprehensive plan allows for some flexibility and also calls for development of smaller lots to conserve land and allow for more affordable housing, as well as providing a mix of housing types to provide options for households of all types and income levels. Additionally, the Northeast District Plan encourages housing diversity and a mixture of single-family residential along with townhomes and small apartments. The Northeast District Plan indicates that the apartment buildings adjacent to neighborhood commercial areas and at intersections of arterial and collector streets are particularly allowed or encouraged. Staff does find that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive planning intent due to the location of the project near Old Town Village, which is immediately to the west of this property, which is a commercial area. Also is because it's, as it's located along Herbert Hoover Highway, which is considered an arterial street. Therefore, a mixture of housing types, including multifamily, is appropriate, we feel, in this neighborhood. Additionally, development of a variety of housing types as proposed addresses the goals of the comprehensive plan. There are some photos here of the nature of the property currently, as you view it from different angles, primarily along Herbert Hoover. As part of the rezoning, the applicant has provided a concept plan for Phase A and B. It's important to remember, this is only a preliminary concept, and the details will need to be refined as part of a site plan approval process, which would follow after rezoning. Again, the area in, there's not color-coded here, so I'll use my pointer for you. Phase A is this section here. This is a slightly larger lot, which would be closer to three acres. Phase B is essentially close, to the east, is close to two acres. Between them would be a right-of-way dedication for a future public street, with the intention that as development happens, that this would be making a connection to the existing street network. It would primarily, the site would primarily be accessed off of Herbert Hoover Highway through that north-south road. As I said, the road would eventually connect. Maintenance of the north-south road would be the property owner's responsibility until the completion of the second phase, Phase B. Once completed, the road would be dedicated to the city, and at that time, the city would recommended, and Planning Commission has recommended, a condition memorializing that arrangement. Staff does also recommend the general conformance with this concept plan as development would proceed to the site planning stage. As I mentioned, Herbert Hoover is an arterial street. We've done an analysis of the carrying capacity of that street. There is capacity for additional traffic as it's designed. Currently, it is not a city standard street, though. It does not have curb and gutter. This development would be required to make a contribution to the future improvement of that street. There is a sidewalk along the street currently that functions as a side path for bicycles. Because it's a arterial street, there is a setback requirement of 40 feet for the buildings along that road. In addition to that requirement, there is also the recommended condition detailing additional landscaping to ensure that noise and wind are buffered for the residents of the future community here. That landscaping plan is intended to be developed in consultation with the city arborist, thus to make sure we identify the appropriate tree species and planting details as I plan. This property does have access to an eastside express bus line with a bus stop approximately half a mile away from it. And then, as I said, the Northeast Plan calls for increasing neighborhood opportunities for accessing open space by incorporating parks. In this case, it likely be a fee and lieu dedication for the open space requirement, which would be approximately a third of an acre requirement. The applicant did provide also concept elevations of the project. Again, these are only as in concept. And as I said, they have some other examples of their other projects that they have already developed. They provided this concept for the two multi-unit buildings for the first phase, A and B. They, as they would be likely to be multifamily buildings, they would be subject to the city's multifamily site development standards outlined in our zoning code, and those would be evaluated at the time of site plan development. So coming before you tonight is a recommendation from the Planning Commission for approval of this application with three conditions. First, regarding the north-south street and memorializing the requirement that it shall be built to city standards and dedicated to the city as a public improvement in accordance with the subdivision's agreement in a form acceptable to the city attorney. The second condition regard, is regarding the detailed landscaping plan to be approved by the city arborist to ensure a landscape area that buffers noise and wind from the proposed housing communities at the time of plating. And third, that no building permit shall be issued for the subject property until the city council approves a final plat that conforms to the proposed zoning boundaries and generally conforms to the street layout on the concept plan. I think that concludes my presentation to you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
With the current boundaries, what is school district for elementary?
Oh, that's a good question. I'm not sure I know that.
Let me maybe?
I would guess you're going to be Hoover if the, if the redistricting continues the way it appears to be.
Okay.
If the, I should mention, the concept is for multifamily on Phase A. If the second Phase B would proceed after that, it would be constrained by our affordable housing model, so that it would not be eligible. They have an option that they are still kind of exploring for that site where it might be senior housing instead, so slightly different concept for B to be determined. They're proceeding primarily with A first.
Danielle, a question about the Good Neighbor meeting and the water retention, stormwater issue. Obviously, we've got a property owner to the south who feels like we've got another development to the north where that stormwater is not, stormwater retention, whatever's supposed to happen, hasn't been happening very well and is affecting his property and his pond and is also concerned about this one. Can you and/or engineering staff address this? I mean, one of the things that they talked about was this road going, this street going directly towards the south. I realize there's that third, potentially third piece that's sitting there right now, but basically, I don't know what the elevation changes are on that road, but it heads directly towards his property with about 300 and something feet between the end of that street and the north end of his property.
Sure. So what's not detailed at this stage, because we're not to that level of site planning, would be the stormwater retention that has to happen for the developed sites as they occur. So there would be a requirement for stormwater detention for the Phase A and Phase B for their impervious surfaces. I imagine there would also be, and this is something engineering would probably have better comment than I, to deal with the stormwater that the streets generate. Eventually, in a final build-out condition, the streets would have curb and gutter and those facilities as part of them, installed as part of them. So simply, the runoff would be accounted for as well for the pavement. I don't know what the interim solution is there. Engineering, I'm sure, would know that, but there is a significant amount of land between the stub street where it would end with this development before the subject property to the south. So, I mean, the short answer is that we do have stormwater detention requirements and with this project would be required to meet all of those standards.
Maybe we could, we could have Ron and Jason come up and talk about some of the challenges we've had at Churchill Meadows.
I would appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah. Jason Havel, city engineer. One thing I wanted to point out, too, is it's important to remember that they're still allowed to pass that stormwater from one site to the other. So, I mean, it's not a matter of trying to keep water from continuing to follow that, that natural route, but they would be required to manage that. You mentioned Churchill Meadows, and there have been some challenges out there with some of the sediment and other stuff that's been leaving one site into another site. I think that's really more of probably erosion control and management of the, the stuff that's in place, more so than a situation where maybe controls, appropriate controls haven't been considered. So I think really, in that situation, it's a matter of maintaining those. It's continuing to keep an eye on those. And when issues do start to occur, we need to stay on top of those and make sure that they're being addressed as they come up. So I think it's really more of a maintenance issue than it is a, but a situation where maybe things weren't considered.
Jason, I'd like to follow up on that. A few days ago, or maybe a week ago, Susan and I went out to Old Town Village and met with members of the Old Town Village neighborhood, and you were there.
I was there.
As was Ben. And we heard them express all sorts of complaints, basically, about a stormwater retention pond and wetlands that just aren't functioning well at all. What I don't know, because I haven't been able to study a topographical map, is whether there's any direct relationship between this site that we're discussing tonight and that particular stormwater detention pond and wetlands. And if so, if there is, whether this would exacerbate the situation.
Well, I can't speak offhand to that. I'd have to take a look and see if it does flow that direction. I think what we're trying, maybe to try and simplify, what we're trying to do with our stormwater management is basically say, we're trying to do what already happens naturally. And so we're trying to keep that water that falls on impervious surfaces, whether it's streets or roofs or whatever it is, from basically making the situation worse downstream. So that's part of where the stormwater detention comes into play. And I think that's really what we're trying to do is, you know, we may be collecting this water faster, or there may be more of it that we're detaining, but what we're trying to do is release it at a rate that is comparable to what happens naturally. And so I think it may head that direction, or it may head to the pond to the south, but I think really what we're trying to look at is how do we do that in a manner that is consistent with what would happen naturally.
If I could jump in and maybe from my perspective, give you some thoughts on what's going on in that area. So when you think of stormwater, there's really, I kind of think of it as in two phases. There's the building phase where you have a lot of dirt being moved and houses being built. You get rain that runs off under the street and washes away. The contractors, the developers, have to have a plan in place to control that. It's called erosion control. You're supposed to contain that so you don't get that runoff that goes down. That doesn't really have much to do with the, the long-term design of the stormwater. It's more the short-term construction period. The challenges we've had at Churchill Meadows is with the, the short-term during-construction erosion control. We don't think, and I think there's been citations, there's been some state involvement, that the developer has taken all the necessary steps to control the erosion in the way we hope it should be controlled. We really demand that it should be controlled. So the property owner that's concerned in this case has dealt with some of that. And you've seen some pictures in the, in the submittals of the, of the construction runoff that's coming on to his property. That's more of an enforcement piece on our end. It's not a sign that the design of the subdivision stormwater is faulty. So from us, that's, that's more of an enforcement situation that we need to deal with. And be the same case in this. And we need to be very diligent because we know that, not only with Mr. Pasha's property, but you mentioned Old Town Village, this region of our community is concerned about stormwater. So we're going to have to be extra diligent, both during that construction phase and make sure that the proper erosion control is not only set up, it's usually set up okay. It's whether it's maintained over time, okay. And that's where, frankly, we fall short sometime because we, we don't have enough, you know, staff, frankly, to be out checking those on a regular basis. So we need to do a little bit better there. But the long-term plan that Jason's referencing and how that stormwater is detained and released, that'll come with the site plan. And we feel very comfortable that our standards will be, will be adequate and, if executed properly, will not have a negative impact on Mr. Pasha's property.
Thank you.
We definitely don't want to create a new problem or make an existing problem worse, right? Okay. Any other questions for all the folks?
I like the idea that it's a, some affordable units that's going to be there. It is a half a mile from, you know, a transportation route, but maybe in the new plan that can be, or, you know, be addressed, so.
Yeah, I do, too, but I still, I still want them to do like more, you know, three-bedroom apartment than, even if the city can give another, like, some kind of money. And I hope the C.H.E., what's it called, the community, the city housing development committee to talk about that, so we can increase three-bedroom apartment there for families, affordable units.
Isn't this LIHTC and that's kind of determined by?
Yeah, this is a LIHTC project that what I think you're referring to is the HCDC, the Housing Commission, Housing Community Development Commission, sorry, that's a mouthful.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Has, has talked about, and you'll get a, a reiteration of their earlier recommendation. They would like the city to further subsidize LIHTC. So Danielle had a slide up there that showed our investment in there. I think what they're talking about is the city providing even more money to the developer in this case, so that rents could be further suppressed. And with the LIHTC and the, the project owner is here and can, can talk to you about, you know, what that is, but the rent levels are dictated in part by the Iowa Finance Authority and that program. And you have, you know, some at 30%, some at 40%, 60%, 80% market rate. You've seen those breakdowns before, but what the commission is asking the city council to consider is to increase your incentive to the developer to further suppress those rents.
Yes.
Above and beyond what IFA requires.
Okay, yeah, that's what I exactly meant. They are working on something like this, you mean?
That's the recommendation to you. That was conveyed in a handout to you when this came through.
I didn't even come across it.
It came through with the, I forget, you had another action item with this recently where it came through to you. At their last meeting, they had a discussion that they didn't feel like it was properly vetted to you. It was in a late handout because of the timing of their meeting. So they've talked about sending you that same recommendation again.
Sure.
So you'll be getting that.
Hopefully. Looking forward for it, anyway. I'm excited.
So I noticed that the commission wants to see more detailed information on similar applications in the future. And Jeff, this is a topic we've discussed before about, basically some tension between the council and the staff, or the developer and the staff, or whoever, about when particular kinds of renderings or elevations or whatever are submitted. So we, we need to schedule a work session on that. And I know you and I have talked about doing that, so we just need to make sure it happens.
Yeah. We're working on something at a staff level to help frame that discussion. I think it's important that you have a written document that, at least from staff, not necessarily giving you the answers, but from our perspective, how that process should work. I wouldn't, tension maybe at times, but more misaligned expectations on, on what, you know, you should see in a, in a rezoning. They wanted to see some more renderings with this. They wanted to see renderings, they or individual members wanted to see renderings with the last zoning item that you just approved, the Behavioral Access Center. We didn't have any concept renderings for that. But you're right, that's a discussion for another day that we're working to help frame right now.
It seems it focuses mainly on apartments or apartment complexes, so, but we'll get to that. All right, let's see. We're still in the public hearing, right? So anyone else want to address this? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, I'm Jamie Thielen, president of Sand Development. And I did just bring some photos. Okay. Just, because I know that was one of the questions to kind of what the development could look like, what some of the building materials are. So this is the, the first phase, as was mentioned before, you know, and it, we put, one of the IFA requirements is specifically that, you know, 60% of the building be brick, stone, or CMU, and then 40% cement board or aluminum accents. And that's what we follow. And then just off to the side are some of the amenities that are go with the development, service parking, outdoor area, community room, and there's a laundry in each unit, and we have onsite management. The second phase, as mentioned, is in the concept stage, but we are looking at making an affordable housing application for our senior project on the second phase, which is, is Phase B, which was talked about in approximately 52 units. This is some pictures, since they're worth a thousand words, you know, on Henry for a thousand words. Just a project we just completed over in Corvail, 56 units, affordable senior, that we just completed. All the affordable units are full, fully occupied. We own and operate a development over in Kingston, Kingston Village and Cedar Rapids, kind of the similar design style we're looking at. And these are a couple of projects in Minnesota that we've completed recently. This is actually a two-phase project in Maple Grove, Minnesota. We built a 48-unit affordable project in the second phase, excuse me, 54 in the first phase, and then the second phase was a 48-unit project. Here is a property in Plymouth, kind of the same cement board siding, CMU, some brick, some other stone. Then you can see the kind of the recreation areas. This is a family project, so we kind of have a larger recreation area for, for the residents. Another community in, in White Bear Lake, a 60-unit family project. Once again, this, this project has underground parking three stories above grade, so. Those are some of the design concepts, and certainly can answer any questions, hopefully, that you may have.
Thanks, David. I'd like to ask you one. You showed some playground equipment in some of those photographs. Can you be a little more precise about what you have in mind for this particular site, this project?
We would typically have a totlot, which would be really recreation equipment for probably children in their age, you know, four to maybe 12. That's typically what we have, because most of the family housing is usually younger kids. It's not a lot of teenagers at the developments using that age. You know, people are maybe in homes or, you know, larger homes, you know, instead of apartment community. So that's really what that is focused on. There's sometimes some outdoor exercise equipment, but, you know, monkey bars, some, some swing toys, things like that. That's pretty typical. But it is really geared toward younger kids. In some instances, we have put in basketball courts, but there's, of course, challenges with that. You know, people are, what time they'd be playing in those, so. And then also, I should mention, there's grills. We put grills outside. There's usually some type of picnic area, benches, things like that, trash areas, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I'd like to ask you another follow-up question.
Yeah, you bet.
This has to do with the possible senior center or senior housing part of this.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm imagining seniors living there. I happen to be a senior. There's a surprise. So it's really good for seniors to walk, and it's not very far from Blackstone Restaurant, et cetera. They're in Old Town Village, the commercial area. How easy will it be to walk, or if they're confined to a wheelchair, go by wheelchair from that site to the middle of Old Town Village? Maybe even to the healthcare facility in the center of it?
Yeah. I believe there is a, if I remember correctly, there's a sidewalk along Herbert Hoover Road. We're going to have a sidewalk on both sides of our street, the public street we're putting in. And I, you know, to be honest, I can't remember exactly how that links into, into that area. And I, to be honest, I can't remember exactly how that links into that area. You know, and for the third phase where that road is going to go, we don't know how that's established in there yet, but certainly would look at some type of link. There also is on our, it'd be on our west side of our property, there's a private street that comes in on that side of our building that we have access to also. And you know, could there be a link possibly somewhere through there? I mean, that's a possibility we look at in the site plan.
Okay, fair enough. Danielle, do you happen to know if that sidewalk that's on the southern side of Herbert Hoover actually goes all the way to?
It does. Yes. That was a condition of the Churchill Meadows rezoning.
Okay, answer is it does. Okay, well done. Thank you, Jamie. Anybody want to ask Jamie any other questions?
I just think having a, you know, the senior community in that location is going to be a little challenging for seniors to access the greater of the community. So I don't know if there's an option for more affordable units, but.
They'd be senior affordable units.
Even the affordable units that's proposed here? Or you're saying the senior housing community would be senior affordable units?
Yeah, both Phase A and Phase B would be Lytec projects.
Yeah, we'd be looking at, the senior would be a mix of 30%, 40%, 60% units, and then some market units. So it would be affordable senior. And we do find it is quite a bit, a lot of independent seniors. Certainly people age in place, so that's certainly an option. So that's what we're, at least what we're looking at, so.
The multifamily isn't affordable?
It is. It is. Yep, the first phase of the family is affordable. Once again, a mix of 30%, 40%, 60%, then we have a couple of market units.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Okay, we're still in public hearing, so would anybody else like to address this? Hearing non again, I'm going to, well, I'm going to ask you whether you are inclined to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation?
No.
Yeah, well, I'm definitely seeing one, two, I don't, did you, three, four? Rockney? Yeah, so there's clearly support for moving ahead on this. Given that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please? So it's of consideration.
Someone?
Second.
Moved by, so I second by Cole. Discussion.
Well, I'll start since I seem to be the one with concerns about the project. You know, I'm happy to see the project moving forward. I am especially supportive of the first phase, Phase A. I think, you know, we're being presented with a concept plan, and as a concept plan, I think, I feel comfortable with the concept as it's being established with respect to the incorporation of some outdoor usable open space. Just the basic layout of the site seems to, you know, be acceptable. I would suggest, in looking at it, that there may be an opportunity to move the parking lot further south to create a little bit more space between the parking lot and the building. It seems like there's some room there on the south side of the parking lot to shift that. A little bit, so it's a little bit further away from, the parking lot's a little bit further away from the building. The second phase, which is at a higher density, it's RM 20. You know, so the Complan had called for two to eight units per acre. The Phase A is around, I think staff had said, 14 units per acre, I believe. The unit count, depending upon the final outcome for Phase B, would be 25 to 31 units per acre. So it's anywhere from three to four times what the Complan had called for. I'm willing to look at that, you know, but I do want to understand how that RM 20 is going to be working on the site. And I'm, that site where Phase B would take place has quite a bit of topographic change there. I looked at it on the Johnson County GIS, and there seemed to be about 25 feet of grade change. And when I look at the site plan, it looks like a very flat site, just like Phase A. And then there's also the question of usable outdoor open space. It seems to be really pushed out to the setback lines, and I'm not seeing any accommodation for, you know, that usable open space. Jim mentioned the question of, you know, accessing Old Town Village. I think again, because there aren't any parks within easy walking distance, and if this were a senior center, it would certainly be nice to have some outdoor spaces where the residents onsite could enjoy themselves. So for now, you know, it felt to me that, you know, A is good to go, the financing's in place. I just have some concerns with B, and also just overall, how is that stormwater going to be dealt with? We are generating a lot of hard surfaces with the buildings themselves and the parking and the streets, so I think it would be really helpful to see the project as a whole as it moves forward rather than, you know, one piece at a time.
Other comments?
I look at this as a question for the long-term strategic goal of moving and providing affordable housing opportunity throughout the community. You know, it's easy to talk about that in the abstract, but when we have the opportunity to have two different housing units for people of all ages and also variety of income levels, maybe not the perfect set of income levels that we'd like, but we make real progress on that, I think we got to seize the opportunity. I see where your concerns are, but as we've talked a lot before, new construction is extremely expensive. And this particular proposal gets it done with some city assistance, with some Lytec assistance. And I think we just sort of need to seize that opportunity and celebrate that we have the good private sector come in and meet our affordable housing needs with minimal cost to the taxpayer, although we are contributing to this. I think we're really catalyzing development in that area. I think we're also working in tandem with our school district to sort of hardwire in socioeconomic diversity into the various neighborhoods. So I'm an enthusiastic supporter of this project as it is, and I'm looking forward to seeing it come to fruition.
Yeah, I second what Rockney said, really. I don't want to repeat everything what he said, but this is really great. I'm really, you know, very happy about the base of affordable housing into it. And I guess, as I said, I'm going to repeat it again, I hope the city will provide more money so the rent for affordable can go a little down. And, you know, especially for three bedrooms, because really when I see the price, and the good thing about it, you did not only provide like just 40% on the unit, the rent price, you know, that figure is very important to like seeing it there so we can tell how much is 40% and how much is, you know, the 30% and all this. I really like it, and I guess things you kind of setting the standard for, and also the developer who are going to come and do the same thing will be great, yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to this. Again, I think echo what Rockney said in terms of, you know, diversifying the housing stock, the units and price points, et cetera, throughout the region. And I think John's points bring up that whole issue that you mentioned, Jim, is having that conversation about how much of this detail we're getting, that we're talking about at council level versus how much is already laid out in our design standards that staff is looking at and P and Z is looking at. So how much do developers actually have to do before they go to P and Z because we actually have those standards in place? And I'm an advocate that we have those standards defined so that as much as we possibly can, so that developers know what the requirements are on the front end, and that we're not trying to make those adjustments to, you know, the outside design or the placement of certain spaces, but that it's already laid out so they know what they're doing and it's not having to put thousands or tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars into changes later on. So I think that conversation is a very important one that we need to have.
Other comments? I'll say something brief here. I think John raises some interesting and valuable points. And I could say, in my own personal ideal world, the whole complex of Old Town Village and the surrounding neighborhoods would be better integrated with one another as a matter of physical design. And there's a lot of guides about how to do that, but we're not in that ideal world. So I see all the virtues of this project, which Rockney and Maz have articulated. So I'm fully supportive of it. I think it will make a major contribution to that area, and I'm very pleased to be able to support it. No further discussion? parole call, please.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Item 10C, zoning code amendment related to transfer of development rights for historic properties. This is an ordinance amending Title 14 zoning code of the Iowa City Code related to transfer of development rights for certain historic properties. I'm going to open the public hearing. Good evening, Ann.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ann Russet with Neighborhood and Development Services. The item before you tonight is a draft ordinance related to transfer of development rights for historic properties. In terms of the background, the city council considered a local landmark designation back in May for 410, 412 North Clinton Street, and that was deferred to January 2019 while staff explored a citywide ordinance for transfer of development rights. On September 4th, city staff received some direction from city council on how to move forward. And the city council directed staff to move forward with the draft ordinance. The draft ordinance that I will present tonight represents staff's recommendation, given the timeline of adoption of an ordinance by January 2019. This draft ordinance was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission on October 7th and by the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 18th, which recommended adoption by city council. Here's the timeline for the project, and as I mentioned, the deadline for ordinance adoption is January 29th, 2019. This is just a reminder for councils and for new council members, this is the project that was considered back in May for local landmark designation, the property at 410, 412 North Clinton Street. I also wanted to provide a brief explanation of the difference between National Register listed landmarks and Iowa City local landmarks and districts. And the main difference is that Iowa City local landmarks and districts are protected, and exterior alterations to these properties are subject to approval by either the Historic Preservation Commission or city staff. So the idea behind the proposed ordinance is that it would provide an incentive to property owners to locally landmark their properties. This slide here is just a brief kind of example of an explanation of what transfer of development rights is. TDR programs can be very complicated, although the idea is that this would incentivize the protection of historic resources. There has been no market analysis completed for such a program in Iowa City. So at this point, it's unclear whether or not there's a market, and staff is uncertain whether the ordinance will be an effective incentive. The idea behind TDR is that property owners of future local historic landmarks could sell or transfer the development potential of their property, of the historic resource or the sending site, to a receiving site, which is in areas where the city wants to encourage more development and density. Now I'd like to provide a summary of the draft ordinance, starting with eligible sending sites. The input that staff received from city council in September was to only include future Iowa City historic landmarks as sending sites. During our conversation with the Historic Preservation Commission, they expressed some concerns if the ordinance only applied to Iowa City historic landmarks, and their concern is that it would deter the creation of Iowa City historic districts. They were also concerned that the five properties locally landmarked this summer would not be eligible for a transfer incentive. Based on that input, the draft ordinance identifies sending sites as those sites being zoned either single-family, multifamily, or commercial, and also that the sending site must either be designated as an Iowa City historic landmark or listed as a contributing structure in an Iowa City historic district after January 1st, 2018. So we are proposing that this apply to future landmarks, future districts, and it would include those five properties that were landmarked this summer. Properties within existing historic districts would not be eligible, and properties within existing and future conservation districts would not be eligible. Staff conducted an analysis of potential receiving areas, and we looked at those properties that were landmarked this summer. The proposed downtown historic district, which was presented to council at a work session recently, based on a survey that was recently completed by AK Consulting. And we also looked at a list of potential landmarks that was created by the Historic Preservation Commission. So based on this analysis, staff determined that the transfer potential is around 151 dwelling units and 6,460 feet. If other historic landmarks and districts are contemplated in the future, the transfer potential would be greater than what we've identified here on this table. Moving on to eligible receiving sites, the input that staff received from city council is to look at properties in riverfront crossings and sites that allow multi-unit development. The draft ordinance would allow receiving sites if they were zoned riverfront crossings, multifamily, or commercial zones that allow multifamily. The following sites would not be eligible as receiving sites if it was an Iowa City historic landmark, any property located within an Iowa City historic or conservation district, and if the property was designated in the National Register of Historic Places. This map is a map of the proposed receiving sites. As you can see from the map, it doesn't include all of the properties within riverfront crossings, only those that have been rezoned to riverfront crossings or those that allow multifamily Staff also identified those potential receiving sites that are either vacant or underutilized, and these sites are identified in red on this map. And based on staff's analysis, these sites could accommodate around 2,369 dwelling units, and that is based on the current zone district, and it doesn't include any potential density bonuses that would be allowed through a transfer. Moving on to the transfer of development rights formula, the direction that staff received from city council is to create a new formula, new in that it would not be the same as what's currently, the current formula in the riverfront crossings ordinance, and to use other cities' formulas as a guide. The draft ordinance outlines two options for transfers. One is a transfer of height, and the other is a transfer in density, so you could choose either one or the other, not both. And the ordinance also outlines that transfers may exceed the maximum height or density allowed on the receiving site with some limitations, one being that height bonuses may not exceed 40 feet above the maximum allowable height in the zone. Also, if it's adjacent to existing single-family, the height bonus may not exceed 20 feet or two stories above that existing single-family house. We did hear at the last Historic Preservation Commission meeting that some commission members were interested in reducing that 20 feet down to 10 feet. The draft ordinance doesn't identify any restrictions on density. So the transfer formula for the height bonus option would be the difference between the maximum allowable height of the sending site and the existing height of the historic structure. The draft ordinance also outlines that if that difference is any, if it's more than zero feet and less than 10 feet, the transfer would be 10 feet. This is just a kind of a photo to illustrate how this would work. This is the property at 410 North Clinton. The maximum height in that zone is 35 feet. The existing height of the property is around 23 feet, so the transfer potential for this property would be around 12 feet if they were requesting a height bonus transfer. Staff created this map of potential receiving sites to help visualize the heights allowed by the current zone districts. So this map shows the base maximum heights already allowed by the zoning code. A majority of the proposed eligible receiving sites have a maximum of height of 35 feet. A majority of the proposed eligible receiving sites have a maximum of height of 35 feet. So the ordinance would limit height bonuses to 40 feet above the base zone, which you see in this map. However, if it was adjacent to single-family, it would be even more limited. The other option is a density bonus option, and the formula for that is the difference between the maximum number of dwelling units allowed on the sending site and the existing number of dwelling units on the sending site. And that maximum density would be determined at the time of the local landmark designation based on the base zoning designation. And this is just another example to illustrate how this could work. This again is 410 North Clinton Street. This site allows a maximum of 25, excuse me, 24 dwelling units. There's currently 18 dwelling units on the site, so you could have a transfer potential of around six dwelling units. Staff put together a couple of maps to show the potential receiving site and the maximum density allowed by the current zone. So this map shows maximum density, which is shown in dwelling units per acre already allowed by the current zone district. And this map shows the range of dwelling units allowed by the current zone district. It's shown in ranges, so the blue areas allow between 0 and 40 dwelling units on each site up to the red areas, which are around 200 dwelling units per acre. And again, this is what's allowed by the current zone district, and it's not showing any potential increases in density or additional dwelling units. In terms of the process, city council wanted a similar process to that which exists in riverfront crossings, where all transfers would be reviewed and approved by the city council. So the draft ordinance outlines a similar process. Any transfer request would be reviewed by the staff design review committee, and the committee would submit a recommendation to city council for their final review and approval. There are some remaining issues and constraints related to this ordinance that I just wanted to highlight. First is related to market potential, which I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. It's unknown whether or not a demand exists for this program. Also, TDR programs are very complicated, and it may make it difficult for some property owners to utilize. Second is certainty, and the council review and approval process certainly provides some additional oversight and also helps to address some of the concerns that we heard at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting about potential negative impacts on existing neighborhoods. But that lack of certainty, it could be an issue for both the development community and a property owner of a potential local historic landmark. Third, the other bonus mechanisms that exist in our code. Some of the more effective TDR programs that we've looked at throughout the country provide few or no other alternatives to achieving additional development potential. So the effectiveness of such a program may be reduced by the other bonus provisions that the city currently allows. The proposed ordinance is consistent with our comprehensive plan. There are several goals in our land use element and our historic preservation plan that identify the importance of protecting historic resources and providing incentives, economic incentives to protect those historic resources. And then lastly, this is the timeline again. We're here, November 20th, the public hearing in first reading. So there are a few meetings between now and the January 29th deadline for adoption. And that's all I have. I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Ann. Before I ask other council members to pose questions to you, I want to tell you, I think you've done an absolutely brilliant job of doing research on this, of consulting with the two commissions, and I know it's not just you, other staff are involved, consulting with the other commissions, the two commissions, and presenting this material to us in such a clear way. It's just a brilliant job. Thank you. That said, maybe you folks have questions you want to ask, Ann, before we get into discussion about it?
I guess I have questions about, for a developer, when we're talking about the transfer of development rights, what would be the real benefit? I mean, they still have to come to council and get approved for whatever height bonus. And so I'm having a little trouble because, you know, if you're selling those rights, I mean, you still have to get council approval on that. So I'm just having a little hard time understanding what will be the benefit for the developer? And it's not like the developer can come with a trump card and say, hey, you know, council just voted me down, you know, here's my TDR. You have to, you know, you have to take it. So help me understand that piece.
Well, like I said, the process does lack some certainty, but I think it could be an incentive in the right location and the right design if a developer could work with a property owner of a future local landmark.
Okay. But again, if they wanted a height bonus, an actual height bonus, that would still have to require the council's approval.
Yes.
So I'm not totally convinced that this would, you know, is like a magic key for a lot of developers. And then, you know, and then it's setting up an expectation that if they come and say, you know, you know, I want to use the TDR from this historic, you know, landmark that I went ahead and agreed to, and then council says no to what they're proposing, then I just feel like, you know, what is the real purpose for the developer? And what type of, you know, ability do they really have to get what they're wanting, you know, with this, you know, just having the transfer within their possession? I'm having a hard time understanding how it can really benefit them.
Right. And I think that's what I tried to articulate in the presentation and the staff report, is that there's no certainty, and there's no guarantee that anyone is going to get a transfer. We have seen this work in one instance in riverfront crossings, and it was a transfer that was approved by city council. So I think depending on the project, it could be an incentive, and it could work, but like you said, there's no guarantee.
And when they take that, you know, transfer, you know, within the community to try to get it, you know, a height bonus or a density or whatever, you know, again, there is no guarantee. And I think that's the piece that I wish this could address for a developer, that there was some type of guarantee. And again, I don't know that council would ever want to, you know, guarantee someone would have that ability to come and say, I want to go up, you know, or, and you can do this because you've done that. You know, I'm having a hard time just seeing the benefit for the developer overall.
Okay.
If I can, just, you're not alone in that. We've had a lot of discussions at the staff level. We have that same concern. You know, with Tate Arms and even with this Clinton, we're working with a developer who owns a lot of properties and is developing a lot of properties. So there's less concern with those as opposed to properties that may not be controlled by someone with such a real estate holding in our community. Frankly, we're concerned, and maybe I'm concerned a little bit, that we're kind of pushing and we're rushing, frankly, because of the deadline we put on ourselves, a bonus that might become a false commodity. And I think that's what you're really talking about, is something that sounds great, but in practice, is it really going to mean anything? And I think it could potentially cause a lot of political strife when I, you know, and it's reading one of this, but Ann had to flip through those maps really quick. If you take your time to really analyze those maps, and you look at where those receiving sites are, and you think about the types of proposals we get in those locations, we get the, you know, and then those multifamily locations that are on the periphery of the community, you typically get your three, four-story apartment buildings that are already big, sometimes because that's what the zoning allows, sometimes our sensitive areas ordinance forces them to be bigger. And you think of the opposition or some of the struggles we have at this table in approving those, it's usually height and density, right? And so now we're adding another layer of height and density onto that. And frankly, I just, I'm pretty nervous about how this is going to play out. I think it could cause the potential for a lot of hand wringing up here at this table, particularly if we get into the, you know, like an area like the downtown district, where you've got a little, you know, in one vote of approving a downtown district, you've got all kinds of units and height bonus that are instantly created with, in my view, little place to go.
Let's see if there are other questions for Ann.
In terms of the market for these transfer development rights, you know, along with what Bruce and what Jeff were talking about, is, could it create a market in which you could freely exchange the rights from person to person? So let's say, for example, the developer had an expectation, and presumably, what I envisioned it is that there'd be some, you know, the council has to approve the landmark, and at the time they approve the landmark, they have to pretty much hopefully, I mean, there could be a change in council between the time they approve the landmark and they have the next project, but presumably there's enough trust that the counselor's going to go up there and say, we're going to approve this historic landmark, and then when that proposal comes at a later time, hopefully they're going to carry through on what their promises. So I guess my concern's a little bit left, but assuming that happens, back to our question, is it a, can you transfer, let's say you can't do the project, and developer's frustrated, can they sell that to someone else?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So to me, I think that that addresses, I think, your concern, they get frustrated. Why wouldn't you want a free moving market that would allow them to move these around if there was the political opposition on the sensitive units?
See, I look at, my big concern is, again, when you look at the timing, if your sending site has to be designated, okay, let's, I think there's two different, two totally different examples. One, let's say these individual homes that were designated in 2018. Okay. We did five of them, homeowners didn't object. Now, if we pass something like this, theoretically, any one of them could sell a transfer development right to a developer to use somewhere else, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Assumingly, I would assume that a developer would be smart enough to buy it conditioned upon the council approving a receiving site. Okay? But let's take a different example, where, you know, as in this case that we're talking about, you've got a developer who owns multiple parcels, and they aren't necessarily interested, let's say, in preserving a piece of property unless they are guaranteed that they can transfer those development rights. But it seems to me we have a process in place that is linear, in which they have to do the historic designation before they can do the TDR and get the approval to actually transfer it to a receiving site. Is that correct?
Yeah, the property would need to be landmarked first.
Right. So they are considerably at risk. If they don't have any personal concern or consideration for that preservation and are really only doing it to get the TDR, they've got no guarantee that they're getting the TDR, none whatsoever.
They can sell it to someone else, can't they, if they're not successful?
But somebody, yeah, but then somebody else is...
I mean, if they're concerned they're not going to get the TDR, they're likely not going to be able to sell it to somebody else.
Well, it depends upon where the location would be.
It's not going to be marketable. Yeah, the question is, yeah, how, Mark? Okay, you've answered my question, thank you.
The question's about location. They would be concerned about not being able to get a transfer to a particular receiving site. But if they're interested in getting it there or selling the right to someone else that could be used at any of these other receiving sites, then...
True, but all it's going to take is the city council turning down one or two or three of these TDR requests, and your market for them is gone. Because nobody's going to dare buy them if they're seeing them getting turned down by the council. And I think Jeff has articulated very well this issue of, we already get pushback on increasing heights and densities in certain locations, and if with this we're going to try and increase heights and densities even more, is this or any future council, and I don't mean this as any criticism of anybody sitting here, but I'm just saying, looking five, 10, 20 years forward, is anybody sitting up here going to be willing to kind of keep pushing that envelope in terms of height and density when you have people in the community pushing back on that? So I do really question the marketability of these.
Point taken. Let's see if there are any other questions for Ann, and it could be, there's somebody else in the room that wants to speak, so let's find out.
Ann, one question I had was, this whole process, as we've said, has been triggered by 410-412 Clinton. And Jeff actually seemed to suggest that there has been some discussion as to how this TDR, as it's been developed, could apply to 410-412?
Just what we presented in the presentation, just kind of an example of how a height or a density bonus could be applied using that property.
Yep. Beyond that, though, in terms of actually kind of addressing some of the concerns I'm hearing, that there has been, has there been any discussion regarding that particular property and the potential receiving sites?
No.
There is not?
No.
Can I ask another question?
Let me just interrupt, though. We have communicated with the property owner and their attorney, and they're well aware that when we're providing information to the council and have been, you know...
Yeah, that's true.
And that information has been available to them. Yes. Ann, can you tell me, when we say we're not, they can't do both height and density bonus, is there not the potential that when you, if a height bonus is granted, that you could in fact exceed the density, the base density on that zoning? So in effect, they would be getting both height and density bonus?
They could not. They would have to, if they were requesting a height bonus, they would still have to meet the density that's allowed by the base zone district.
So potentially, they could not get the full height bonus that the formula would allow because it would then exceed the density bonus?
I guess that's possible, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ann. We might ask you to come back up in a few minutes, you know. Hi, Kevin.
Hello, I'm Kevin Boyd, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. And, you know, we come together as a city to share things. We come together to share protection, fire, safety. We come together to provide services like water and sewer, infrastructure like streets and parks. And every resident of Iowa City has a shared history. Whether you're here for, just moved to town today, or have been here your whole life, we as a city have a shared history. And some of the buildings in our community, these potential landmarks, reflect that shared history and help us tell the story of parts of that history. And as we work to kind of balance preservation and our shared history and the development pressures that exist in some of these places, we've listened, we've tried to start listening more and more, I think, to the owners, the stewards of these historic buildings, and they have asked us, and the city broadly, to give them more tools to preserve these historic resources. The proposal before you tonight is one of those tools. I hope we as a community consider other tools as well, other incentives, other ideas, listening to folks about how these, what the needs are to make sure that these historic resources are preserved and utilized. And so I think we may have others to consider as well. I hope we give this one a try, because I think we can learn from it and learn about other things that might exist, other tools that might be there as we work through this as a community. And so I encourage you to vote yes tonight, to give these, to give this, to give us as a community an additional tool to try to figure out, give an additional tool to the stewards of these historic resources that reflect our shared history. And there's one tonight here, I hope you vote yes.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'm Karen Cubby, and I have a couple of questions, and some of it may be that I'm just coming into this kind of late, but when, will the city set up some kind of clearinghouse so people who want to buy TDRs and people who have them to sell or trade can know who those people are? There would be some kind of spreadsheet or something?
I think that's right, isn't it? Ann, just nod your head if it is, yeah.
And when someone can get that 40 feet, so if there's a small cottage that may be, you know, I don't know what that... you know, I don't know what that footprint is on a small cottage, but does that mean that the whole, the transfer, the whole development of a multifamily apartment building or commercial building gets four feet on their whole footprint? Or is it just the 40 feet times the footprint of the small cottage? So I'm a little confused by that, if that could be clarified. And the other thing that I'm not quite understanding, so I'm really glad Kevin is here, is it seems like how things are written is that this might incentivize individual local landmarks and districts, because then there would be these transfers to sell, as long as there's enough place to put them. And there was a concern from the commission that this would be a disincentive, and I'm just not understanding that, so I'd love a better explanation of that. And I think the last thing I wanted to comment on is, well, maybe there's two last things. One is maybe doing this at a time, because if there is forward motion on federal or local landmark for the downtown district or the downtown area that's on the map, is it really important to look at these two things at the same time? Because the downtown area, if it's considered with a local overlay, would be a huge impact on what the market is for here, and I wouldn't mind a slowdown to really have those two things be at the same time. Oh, I'm going to forget that last thing. Oh, there is incentives in the Economic Development Committee for increased local public assistance for projects and historic preservation is one of those things that can trigger some of those incentives. So I want us to just remember, we're looking at a whole set of packages, potentially, of how our community values historic preservation and how that gets lived out in policy to help developers do new projects. And that's one that wasn't talked about tonight as a way that can, does that complement or interfere with this?
Yes.
So if you can talk to me about the 40-foot thing, that'd be awesome.
Ann, can you address that immediately, or, yeah?
Yeah. So one of the questions was if the sending site is a small cottage, how would that play out if it was transferred to a much larger building? The way the ordinance is drafted now is that it's based on stories, not square feet. So let's say the cottage is 200 square feet, but the new multifamily building is 1,000 square feet footprint. They would still transfer four stories or whatever the transfer would be. You also had a question about how the ordinance could potentially disincentivize districts. When staff originally presented this to the Historic Preservation Commission, staff was proposing that the transfer incentive only applied to local historic landmarks. And the HPC was concerned that if we only apply this incentive to landmarks, it would disincentivize the creation of districts. So we revised the ordinance to allow the transfer incentive to be applied to contributing properties in local districts.
Would anybody else like to address this topic? Hi, Jen Lee. Nice to see you again.
Thank you. I'm Jen Lee Swaim, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of Friends of Historic Preservation, which I've just joined as the board. One, just a few thoughts. One is that, is it possible to extend the January 29 deadline? I remember when we were going through that meeting, and I was concerned, others, I think, might have been too, that we were going to maybe shoot ourselves in the foot by trying to get this done too quickly, and that January 29th was too soon. So that's one consideration you might consider. As Kevin said, this is one tool in a toolbox of ways to try to save our historic character. It's not the only tool. It's not going to work for every building. It's for very specific buildings, and it worked really well for the Tate Arms. And we now have that building so important to African-American history in this town because of the transfer development rights there. In terms of marketability, I see your point, Susan. I guess also, though, not everyone even wants to buy a historic building. It is a particular kind of buyer that's willing to take on a historic building because they see it as an opportunity. And so while it may discourage some buyers, I think it's, again, you just need the one right buyer for that piece of historic property that might be landmarked. So, again, the Friends of Historic Preservation really applauds you for taking the initiative with city staff to explore what kinds of financial incentives can make this a better situation for property owners and developers and for all of us who really cherish the historic buildings in the community and know that it's part of our past, but it's also part of our future as economic drivers. So thank you.
Thanks, Jen Lee. Jeff, I want to ask you a quick question. I'm guessing that if the developer is willing to extend, then, and the city wanted to extend, and, you know, both parties agreed that it would be possible to do that, just as a factual matter, not as something I'm advocating.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else want to address this topic? Seeing no one else, I think it would be a mistake to leap into trying to answer the question about what you think about agreeing with the Planning and Zoning Commission, before we discuss this a little bit, to kind of get a sense from each other about how you're thinking. And then we can pose that question, are you willing to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, and if so, et cetera, all those kinds of things? That's viable, isn't it, Eleanor, to do it that way? Yeah. Okay, so I want to begin by saying a few things. This is an extremely complicated proposal we have in front of us, and it contains a great deal of uncertainty about how it would play out, especially with regard to potential effects on a downtown historic preservation district if, in fact, one is created, I'm not saying one will be, but if one's created, and neighborhoods that would be receiving sites. If, Ann, put one of those maps back up there, every one of those receiving sites is a potential flashpoint for basically political turmoil. And we should be aware of that. I mean, if we choose to move ahead, just, okay, we choose to do that, but be aware that that's the situation. So much as I want to preserve the historic structure at 410, 412 North Clinton, I think it would be a really serious mistake to authorize such a complicated, uncertain, and consequential process without a great deal more vetting. Like, Karen, I guess you were saying something about the overlap of concerns having to do with historic preservation in the downtown area. Yeah, we don't really know how this would play out relative to the bonuses that you referred to and whether there's going to be a district or not, and so on. So I think it'd be a mistake, really bad mistake, to move ahead without a great deal more vetting. Maybe we could negotiate, I don't know, a six-month extension with the developer, just to throw out a timeline. I don't know if that's viable, just kind of toss it out there. I also think that enabling a transfer of density to the Riverfront Crossings District would be inappropriate due to the maximum heights and height bonuses already permitted there. I mean, there's 15 stories, 12 stories, all this stuff already permitted down there by, with height bonuses. So can I transfer more density into that area? On a related point, though, I agree with Kevin, Kevin Boyd, when he urges us to explore other ways of incentivizing historic preservation. The only one that immediately comes to my mind is reductions in taxes for some defined period of time for the taxable value of what's being transferred, or something like that, and, you know, we'd have to figure that out. Maybe there are other tools that could be used. Probably if they were available, we would already be using them, but I don't know. Anyhow, those are my concerns, and I can elaborate if you want to, but I know you all have things to say, too.
I think, as far as I'm concerned, it's true, there's risk in any course that we take, but I think there's a risk of inaction as well. I got to say, in terms of looking at this, this is precisely what I think we should be doing. I think the important thing to keep in mind is that we do have our hands on the steering wheel, both as to the grant of the landmark and at that second level, in terms of, my understanding, the grant at the receiving site as well. So I would like to move forward with it, because I think the reality is, is that in any historic landmark process, the piece of it that I think is going to drive everything is this question of the landowner having it diminished in their value. I think during one of the processes, they talked about, "This is my 401K." And I don't think it's fair if we have a situation where, to preserve a historic resource, as much as I love historic preservation, that we ask someone to take a 20%, just throwing that out of the air, a 20% reduction in the value of their property. And so what this allows us to do is eat our cake and have it too, to allow that potential to transfer over what they lose and hopefully equal that out as much as we can, and hopefully provide an incentive to get that landowner to affirmatively seek the landmark. I think the other thing, at least as I see it, is that we will be able to control who we landmark, the districts that we decide to landmark, and I think there we can move on with that as well. And we can also, this isn't something where we can never modify, at least is my understanding, if there's parts of the ordinance that aren't working, we can modify that. And without getting into other particular zoning matters before us, I think it only underscores the necessity that if we do engage in this process, we cannot make it difficult once having given the transfer development rights to, on the back end, make it extremely difficult and a painful process. I think if we do want to preserve, we need to move on with it. And I think to sort of delay, I think there's a risk on that end as well, because that economic piece is the flashpoint, as I see it, for most of these projects. I'm actually an enthusiastic yes.
I think Jen Lee's suggestion of the extension certainly would be something that may be helpful in exploring what some of the concerns are with respect to the ordinance as it's been written thus far. You know, we could take that time to probe a little bit more deeply into how, what the potential impacts of these transfers would be on the receiving sites, so that we have a better understanding of whether, you know, what that height, you know, in, say, residential district should be, should it be 10, should it be 20? And really better understand what the impacts will be, which I think we have kind of rushed through this. So it does seem that if we can, if we can get, allow more time to try to really study more carefully what the impacts will be, and maybe that the map of receiving sites changes as a result of that, so that we, you know, we restrict it in some way if necessary. So, you know, I think even just in the time we've had, and it's been pushed pretty hard, there have already been changes. So I'm sort of seeing this as being a document that is in progress, working toward further refinement. And it does seem to be, we've already seen with Tate Arms, that it has worked. So I'm, I've always felt it seemed like, conceptually, a good idea. Of course, you know, the devil is in the details, but I think we've already made progress. You know, I'm encouraged by the positive response of Historic Preservation and P&amp;Z to move forward. So I'm inclined to support it, while understanding that there are obviously issues that have already been identified looking as we move forward.
I think Jim hit it on the head. This is incredibly complex, and I think a lot of information to us in a short period of time, and I want to commend staff and Historic Preservation and P&amp;Z for the, you know, what they've looked at so far. Like you said, John, the devil's in the details, and that's where I'm, I'm really concerned with this. And on the one hand, I'm concerned with how much time staff is spending on this with all the other things that we have going. And while, conceptually, I like the direction it's going, I'm really concerned about setting up a process that doesn't end up working for people, and they have false expectations of how it's going to work. I think, while I understand the desire for council to have the approval, and I think that's probably necessary, that also, you know, is such uncertainty for the developers. And then that timeline, so I'm really struggling with this at this point. I guess I would be interested if the developer, in this case, is willing to look at a deferral. I'd be interested in having a little more time to process this and talk with staff and look at those maps. And I'd be interested in trying to have some conversations with developers directly and kind of get a sense of what they think, because I think that's crucial in how this is or is not going to actually function if we do it.
Initially, I thought that this sounded like a good idea. I was impressed with how well it worked with the Tate Arms conversion and in the interest of preserving historic landmarks. But the more I'm hearing, I think, I've tried to keep track here, I've heard the word uncertainty about four or five times now already, and I think there is a degree of uncertainty. And Jeff even said, nervous how it will play out. So that concerns me about how that would happen, and Rockney had said something about we can't, shouldn't make it difficult for the owners and developers, but I'm thinking they shouldn't feel, and that it's a given, that if they preserve these landmarks, that they're going to get this, these bonuses. Because I don't think that it's a guarantee of a transfer, so I think there's that degree of uncertainty again. So I would, I also agree that we should take a little bit more time to really look at this and think about it.
I think we also have to be, just a quick follow-up on that, I mean, I think, I think we have to be prepared that if the developer says they're not willing to extend that deadline...
Right, right.
That, you know, so be it.
Again, I think having tools, you know, for historic preservation is key. I think at the beginning of this, it actually does do what, it would, you know, help to preserve some historic preservation. But Rockney said, you know, we don't want to make this painful, a painful process for actually using the TDR, since there are no guarantees. And for me, if at the time when the developer, you know, says, "Yes, I'm going to, you know, do the historic preservation," and then they also simultaneously say, "This site, we want to make the deal now," that we'll get the density or the height bonus, that makes sense to me. But if we're going to say down the road, they come, and there is no guarantee, and especially, you know, high bonuses and density, that is, I mean, that is controversial every time we talk about any of that. And that's because there's a lot of different people in the community that, you know, have come, and I get it, it's a very challenging thing. So I am not convinced that this would be a good tool on the back end. When someone comes and say, "Hey, I did this for you, city council, now I want to use it at this project." When developers are coming and they have their projects, I mean, they're serious, they want that, and it's hard for them to understand why council makes it so difficult for them to do some of the things that they want with their buildings in Iowa City. And so I think this would just add on to frustration that it doesn't need to be there, because if any height bonus has to be, if it's over two stories, you know, approved by council, so, I don't know. I think that this isn't on the back end. The guarantee's not there, and I think it's going to cause a lot of frustration for developers.
I really think also this is really complicated thing for me, and I think we need, like, more time to figure out the impact, and I always like to hear from people. And I always like to hear from people, more people, bring more people to hear from them and see what their input is on this, like, and after that, we can come up with, maybe you can adjust this, we can just come, find out a common ground after that before we can move forward in this.
Okay. I think I see what we need to do, but we'll find out. I'd like to ask Ann another question. I need some clarity about the potential effects of this proposed ordinance on the downtown district, whether it's, whether an historic preservation district is created or not. So let's say no historic preservation district is created. Would the downtown district, would particular structures in the downtown district be able to send, be able to transfer density to other locations? And also, would the downtown district be eligible as a receiving area as well?
So I think I heard a couple of questions. If there is a local district adopted in the downtown, it would no longer be eligible as a receiving site and it would be eligible as a sending site.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry.
And it would be eligible, the contributing properties in that local historic district would be eligible as sending sites.
If a downtown district, historic district is created.
Yes. If a local district is not created in the downtown, the properties that would not be eligible as receiving sites would be the existing local landmarks and any, any property that's listed in the National Register of Historic Places. I will add to that, that the downtown is listed on the map as a receiving site. The zoning district in the downtown does not have a maximum height, it does not have a maximum density. It being used as a receiving site is probably unlikely, so.
Okay. Good, that's helpful. All right, so I think I'm hearing a majority of people saying they would prefer to defer at least for two weeks, I mean, I'm filling in some blanks here, to give staff time to reach out to, who is this, Joe Clark? Whoever the developer, reach out to the developer to see if there's interest on the part of the developer, development team to give us more time, like six months, just, again, just throwing out a tentative timeframe. And I guess the next question that such a developer might ask is, so what are you going to do over those next six months?
That was my question.
Staff might even have that question, right?
That's my question, too.
For one, give us a chance to digest this a little bit more.
Yeah, I think one of the hardest things to digest is to look at the map that's before us right now and say, okay, how would any one of those locations play out on the ground with the neighbors around it, around them? If one of them is identified as a receiving site and they're supposed to get four more stories or something, whatever the height or density bonus might be. And that's why I referred to them as flashpoints because we have to know them on the ground. We can't just look at a map and say, whoopee, there are possible receiving sites. I mean, they are, and it's a great map, like that odd, but they're really neighborhoods and sites and people live near them and work near them and all that. That's part of the uncertainty, it seems to me. Can y'all think of other questions that we would really want staff to be able to answer over the next two weeks, if we revisit this two weeks from now, or over the next several months if we're able to negotiate an extension?
Well, to Bruce's point about the uncertainty of council, would it be exploring the administrative option? I mean, if that's the concern, I mean, where a staff person would determine whether they would be able to get the density, wasn't that one option on the table at some point?
Correct, yeah.
I think there, you know, needs to be some type of a guarantee from the beginning because then, you know, that becomes objective if you're, you know, if you're asking a staff person to make that decision as well as it coming to council. Again, you know, anytime you're talking about, I think the mayor just said the best, there are neighbors that live in these communities and if there's going to be bonuses or higher density, there's just no guarantee in the future. I think if the guarantee can be at the same time that a deal was made, then, you know, we're not going to leave the, the developer has something that is like guaranteed. Right now is going to be down in the future and is up in the air. I think if, you know, all of these red places were, you know, guaranteed at 50 percent, if we can say yes, 50 percent of these places would be really, really eligible and we guarantee that, then I think I would be very, more likely to be supportive. But that's just red and it's still up in the air.
I wonder if there's a process by which the sending and receiving can be done simultaneously. I mean, not, I mean, at least agreement about what's happening so that the owner of an historic property could come to us and say, I want to preserve this structure on this property and I've already contacted so-and-so at, you know, one of these red spaces. And they are agreeable to us transferring density or height to that site. I mean, that's something that comes to mind, maybe, or if the commission recommends designation of a particular property, that somehow time is provided for the developer, the owner of the property to reach out and see if there are.
That makes sense to me.
There are places and that happens, then things are done simultaneously.
Possible, not likely, but possible, yeah.
I know. Kevin?
No. Well, we have not closed the public hearing, so I think it'd be okay for you to come back up, yeah?
Hearing kind of your concerns and sitting and listening and thinking about ways that this may work, I wonder if there's a possibility to do a pilot program of five individual landmarks that are allowed, that we could test this out, right? When the applicant comes in and makes an application for the landmark, the property owner has to indicate if they're interested in transferring these development rights. So if somebody just wants to landmark and is not interested in it, that doesn't count against the five. But perhaps the owner of 410, 412 Clinton Street could be one of the test projects for this. There could be maybe others to see some interest and to kind of incrementally gauge how this might work as a community instead of just saying, we're doing all of this for the whole city forever, that we take, you know, we designate some number, I'm choosing five just because it seemed like enough to test, but not too much to overwhelm. I just think that the staff has put a ton of time and energy and thoughtfulness here and it seems a shame to let it go without at least maybe trying some incremental testing. And that might be something that we could, as a city, get done in advance of the January 29th deadline or that, whatever the January deadline is. So just a suggestion as I'm sitting in the audience and having sat through several of these meetings and thought about how this might work. So take it for what it is, that's my suggestion.
Interesting idea.
Well, that case study, I mean, and I mentioned before the idea of, and I'm reminded of Opticos, you know, when they did our code review for the north side, looking at, you know, what those codes actually translated to in terms of development potential. It seems to me the idea of taking, and I think 410, 412, we kind of saw what it meant on the, you know, in terms of how much height and density it generated. When I saw that, I thought, my gosh, we should be able to pull that off. Didn't seem like that much height or density, whichever it was, whichever rule was applied to transfer. Now, it probably gets more complicated the bigger the TDR. I mean, that seemed like a relatively small one, but, you know, to try to probe what, what actually, you know, on a case study basis are some examples that we could sort of play, play through it and see what, you know, how it generates the density or the, or the building heights that are then transferred and, you know, as if we had this thing in place, where they would go, where it would make sense and where it wouldn't make sense, or what would need to change on the receiving end for it to make sense.
I like the concept, Eleanor, I'm trying to, can we do that? I mean, could, can we, I mean, you're talking, here we're talking about an ordinance, we're talking about a zoning change. Is there a way we can do something like that that is, like Kevin's saying, is like a pilot project where the next five applicants for historic preservation, we would try this on?
I can't, as I sit here, think of how that's gonna, could work.
I mean, I'm even thinking we could do it in the six months, you know, just as a, you know, we could, not that it would be officially a TDR, but play out the scenarios, you know, in a real way.
Can I mention one other, I'm sorry, may I?
Oh, I was just thinking of, if we did pursue this pilot, a pilot program alternative, I think that means we'd have to turn down this particular ordinance. You'll have to tell me. But, but we could then just modify this ordinance slightly as the, as the pilot to, you know, officially state that that's what it is. And so maybe that's legally viable, I don't know, that's what you'd have to say.
This is, this is the conceptual problem I'm having with the pilot is I don't think you can talk about this situation and the incentives it may or may not provide without looking at it in the, looking at it in the context of what council can do without any agreement by the property owner. And I want to make sure particularly that the new council members understand that. So if, if there's a desire to landmark a property, if the property owner objects, the only way that council can make that happen is with a six, with six members of the council agreeing. With a district, if 20 percent or more of the people within the district object, it requires that same 6-1 majority. So, and I'm not, I haven't worked out in my own mind how all that plays with the incentive and disincentive, but I think, you know, the reason we got to this point is because it appeared that there was going to be a majority to designate this landmark, a 6-1 majority despite the property owner's objection. I don't know how many times we're going to get to that point and I, and I really don't understand how that plays out with a district situation. And I guess I, I agree with Karen's earlier comment that I am not, and I keep trying to think about why the incentive for a landmark would disincentivize a district designation. I can't figure that out in my mind, how that works, particularly with the whole, what it takes to make an objection and then what kind of council majority it takes, et cetera. So I'm sorry, I don't have any answers for you, but I think that complicates.
This is part of the uncertainty discussing. We just don't fully understand how this would play out.
So you're talking about the two-week extension, is that where we are? I mean, can we call the question, vote on that, or what?
Well, I don't think you need to call the question, but we, we could, we could certainly just defer for two weeks and then we want to be clear about what could possibly, what we could possibly do or staff could possibly do over the next two weeks.
I mean, I think you really have to investigate that whole issue of adding the district to this mix because I really got concerned when the district was at, when we're talking about contributing properties in a district, not just landmarks, but contributing properties in a district and then the seemingly, seeming lack of desirable receiving sites.
I think what, what we could do, if you, if you want to defer and even, you could defer almost indefinitely right now, and bear with me, we could talk about a short extension with the, with the Clarks on the Clinton Street property. If they're not willing to do that, we could probably come back to you on your work and have some work session time on the 18th to go over this in more detail and really focus on the maps. And we can drill into that at a staff level and maybe give you a sense of that. We could look into the district issue and some other things. And then if the, if an extension is viable, maybe you all can, can think about the questions that you have, that you'd like us to investigate and just communicate those to me and we can work through them with staff and, and come back to you.
All that sounds reasonable to me, except the, we could possibly defer indefinitely. I don't see how that's viable.
To a date uncertain, as opposed to setting it in two weeks and deferring it again or, you know, you could, it doesn't matter, you could set a date.
Well, if we defer it indefinitely, then we're going to have to set the public hearing again and notice the public hearing. So I think we do want to defer to a date certain and then if we have to defer again, we'll defer again.
Just have to defer.
I want to suggest we come back to this on the 4th, December the 4th. I mean, that gives us two weeks to just kind of let all this sink in and get a little more personal clarity about what we think. Maz, I know you wanted to say something.
No, I was trying just to say, yeah, we can just defer it until like you come out with something and ready to represent, but she just said, no, we cannot do that.
Can we get one other thing possibly, and that's with these receiving sites? I'm, can we get a little clarification of the exact location, some, even just some handwritten notes on these with certain major streets or something? I'm just having a little bit of trouble trying to actually figure out where some of these red sites are.
Sure.
So that would save me some time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're still in public hearing. Karen, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to ask a question. In a zoning ordinance, is it possible to have a sunset date? So that you could have an ordinance that is for one year and it expires at one year unless there is further council action? And you might have some metrics, with or without a sunset, you might have some metric, you know, figure out how do you evaluate if this is working? So a sunset may be more possible or doable than a pilot program that could become the pilot program?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I have a lot of questions about a sunset in this context, though, when you're talking about interest in land and transferring and I'd have to think through that.
All right, I want to see if there are at least four people would, would support deferring this to the 4th of December.
Yes.
Yeah? Okay, could I have a motion to defer, please, to the 4th of December?
Second.
Basically seconded by Teague. This is an all in favor, isn't it, to defer, Eleanor? It's an all in favor kind of thing?
Yes.
Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, it sounds like six to one. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Item 10D, zoning code amendment related to public art fees. This is an ordinance amending Title 14, zoning code of the Iowa City Code related to public art fees in riverfront crossings. This is pass and adopt. Could I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
Was that, Rockney, did you move?
Yeah.
Yeah, moved by Cole, seconded by MEMS. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes. What?
Yes is good. You can vote yes or no, it's going to pass.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah, we're voting on the public art.
Oh, okay.
The, the one having to do with public art fees, item 10D. You said yes, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 11, Economic Development Communication Plan. This is a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest an economic development communication plan between the Iowa City Area Development Group and participating cities. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
By MEMS, seconded by Taylor. Discussion.
Well, there is a long history with this one, too. But I'll spare you the negotiations on this. It's actually something that Tom Marcus brought up in his, his tenure here, so I give him a lot of credit. It's taken a few years to get it to the point where Correville, North Liberty, Iowa City and ICA. City, and ICAD are all in agreement with the, the plan, but very excited to bring this to you. It does a couple of things, I'll tell you real briefly what it does, and I'm gonna ask Mark Nolte from ICAD to come up and just share kind of with you why, from his perspective, he thinks something like this is important. Two things, it talks about active pursuit, and so this would prohibit, say, Iowa City from, you know, us, our staff, any third-party agents, from going into Correville or North Liberty or any participating city and actively recruiting their businesses to come locate in Iowa City. The second thing is, is a protocol, and you can see the six steps in, in the, the car and in the agreement, but how do we handle those situations in which we have a local company that wants to go from one jurisdiction to another and is requesting financial incentives? So we've, we've been through this before, and some of the council members have, Susan and Jim that have been on the council the longest have dealt with some of these issues that are, that are very tough. This lays out a, a set of steps and a communication protocol, and basically how we, how we handle those types of requests. And I think, without going through the details of that, I think the end result is something that is going to really strengthen our regional economic development efforts, and hopefully put some of the past struggles that we've had, that frankly have not been productive on a regional basis. They've been really focused on more what's best for individual cities, and at the end of the day, when you have that approach, it's typically, you end up with, with deals that don't move the region forward. I think with an agreement like this, we can really focus our economic development efforts on projects that can move the region forward. So I'm happy to answer any detailed questions that you have, but Mark, if you're willing to come up, and you've sat patiently through some interesting topics, and just share your thoughts on this, I'd appreciate it.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members. Mark Nolte with the Iowa City Area Development Group. I can't add a lot to what Jeff said, but it does, it's a way to kind of put the past in the past and, and moving forward to have a unified front, so that if a, a business or developer or Realtor is trying to play one city off another, we have a unified front that we can say, no, this, we're gonna communicate, keep everything above board, and, and make sure that we're, we're working for the best interests of the communities and the business. With the new opportunities-owned designation, there will likely be some companies that will be looking at some of the new properties, some of the properties in Iowa City that are available, so we may have those conversations with them. So to Jeff's point, it did start when Tom was here, but I think the, the only reason it's gotten to this point is that Jeff has been able to build the trust and the relationship with the other two cities to get it to this point. So it's changed quite a bit from when it first started, but I think it's a, it's a great document, and I'm very excited that we're at this point, and then next week, the other two city councils will take this up on their agendas.
Good deal. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Good patience.
Yes. I was very happy to see this, and I can't say much more than Mark and Jeff have already said, but I just think instead of turf wars, the cities and communities working cooperatively for the benefit of everyone is a very positive thing, has to be positive. That's great, I support it.
I love the idea that the cities are, all came together and really created this collaboratively, collaboratively with ICAD, so awesome job, yeah.
Yeah, I think, Mark, for your involvement in it, because I think that has also been instrumental, and as you said, yeah, we started this with Tom after some, some unfortunate situations that this got started, and like you said, put the past behind us and try and work together, and I think Jeff has been absolutely instrumental in, in building those relationships with Correville and North Liberty, so, and, and I think as you've stressed, both of you have stressed, this is something that will make us stronger as a region, and I think that's really positive.
Anyone else? Yeah, so I would like to congratulate you, Jeff, for pursuing this Marcus-Fruen plan so successfully and diligently. It's definitely not been easy for you. I also want to note that I had a very good conversation over lunch with Mayor John Lundell of Correville and Terry Donahue, Mayor Terry Donahue from North Liberty, a few weeks ago, and this is a topic we discussed, and I was tremendously pleased when Terry made it clear, he said, it's time. So it was really pleasing to hear that. If Terry's watching, I hope things go well in his forthcoming council meeting, likewise with John Lundell and Correville's council meeting. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 12, Hickory Hill Park Improvements Project Phase One. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Hickory Hill Park Improvements Project Phase One, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'll open the public hearing. Hi, Julie, nice to see you again.
Start the meeting, you're at the end of the meeting. I'll keep this very, very brief. You've seen this before, this is Hickory Hill Park, the project we've been trying to do for a while, bridges, bridges, trail improvements and signage. We bid it last September, the bids came in about 47% over, as it was extremely high. So what we've done, and this just takes you back to the master plan, this was the full project, as you saw it last fall, we've now broken it down into two phases. Phase one on the east side is what we're bidding now, with an estimated cost around $300,000. So it's two bridges, some trail work, and then the, I'm sorry, yes, I believe it's two, one bridge, I'm sorry, it's one bridge, trail improvements on the east side and signage. And then once we have this one under contract, we will go ahead and bid phase two, once we know how much is left, we'll scale back based on that. At the same time, we have a lot of reap work, grant work happening in the park. This map shows the yellow lines in the middle is the work that's been done by the Friends of Hickory Hill, largely, and some staff, but mostly Friends of Hickory Hill for restoration. The pink is what is, we just signed contracts for recently to get some of the tree work done, so they'll be removing some of the trees, and then doing some invasive species removal in those wooded areas, and then in the spring, doing stream bank restoration. That will continue in the next year with the reap grant that we just received this fall. So we've got about three major projects all trying to happen out here, and, and we hope to get them going and get all of this work done over the next probably 18 months.
Great, any questions for Julie? Glad to see you. Thank you, Julie. Any, we're out, can I say now, anybody else want to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moved by MEMS, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
Well, it's really nice to, I mean, it's unfortunate with the, the bids, that they came in so high, so this is kind of the incremental approach, I guess, see what we can get in the first phase and, and then plan the second phase accordingly. I think the reap work, which is not really what we're considering, but seeing that, is also very encouraging, because that's, that's something that has really been, not really on the table in terms of improvements in Hickory Hill, and so, you know, the friends are really limited in what they can do, so it's, it's really very encouraging to see those funds being applied to the park as well.
Any further discussion?
Nice, I guess, when I came to Iowa City, the first thing that I noticed, like, different from Alexandria, Virginia, is like kind of park and playgrounds, and that, they have it here more than in Virginia. You know, I said, oh my gosh, this is like really, when you go to park, it's really nice park, and I guess you continue doing that, that will be awesome to keep them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good deal. Anyone else? Hearing, no further discussion, I'm gonna close the public hearing, or I've already done that?
Already done it.
All right, thanks. I get a motion, what was I doing? Oh, yeah, I see, I flipped the paper over. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 13, City Hall MPOJC renovation. This is a resolution approving plan specifications, form of agreement, and estimate of cost for the construction of the City Hall MPOJC renovation project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open the public hearing.
This is a very small remodel project, or refreshing project at the lower level of City Hall, mostly carpet, ceiling tiles, a little bit of a modification to create a new conference room, which we could all benefit from in City Hall. Estimated cost is $126,000, with a few alternates that may push it over the limit, that requires your approval, which is why we're going through this process.
Close observers might be wondering what MPOJC stands for, so it's a Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County, which is housed here in City Hall. All right, so I opened the public hearing. Anyone else want to speak to this topic? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Sully, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Move final adoption.
Second. Moved by MEMS, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Sir, you just walked in, do you want to address this topic? Okay, good deal.
That's Officer Bachelor, he's here for 18.
Well, yeah, you never know.
We know.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, right? Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 18, council compensation. This is an ordinance amending Title I Administration, Chapter Five, City Council, Section Three, Compensation of the City Code to Increase the Salary and Health Insurance Benefit of the Mayor and the Members of the City Council effective January the 1st, 2020. This is second consideration. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Cole, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
Yeah, I'm gonna, just quickly, this may be just the second or third time in the nine years on council that I've changed my vote, and we've had multiple votes. I voted yes on this before, and, and I've struggled with this since we started the discussion. I'm not convinced that this makes a difference in terms of low-income residents being able to run for council, and I've expressed those views before, and so I'll just, we're getting late, I'll just say I'm gonna vote against it.
Anyone else?
I voted against it, but not for that reason. I think, you know, it could be encouraging and everything, but I really wanna see, you know, first, I can vote for it if the city, like, really increase the minimum wage for the city employee to $15 an hour, I wanna see that first, I wanna see we're doing something for the city first, after that, we can think about ourselves. But now voting no for this, but, you know, yes, my, my voting no is really different than Susan MEMS, that's why I wanna be clear.
Okay, any further discussion?
I just, I wanna say that I do believe that it does help individuals, encourage
project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing the city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening, Ron.
Evening. Ron, Kentucky Public Works Director, this project will upgrade the current generator at the site with the renovations and expansion that were done to the plant. The generator that we currently have there will not power the whole site. So this will install a two-megawatt generator and then will also upgrade some of the electrical system within the plant that was originally a part of the project of the upgrades but was taken out due to some issues that had come up during the project itself. So about a one and a half million dollar project.
And it's going to be paid how?
This will be paid with our sewer revenue bonds, or sewer revenue.
Just reserves. We're not buying, just reserves from sewer.
Any questions for Ron?
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else want to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Cole. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mims.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throg Martin.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Move final adoption.
Second. Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Sir, you just walked in. Do you want to address this topic? Okay, good deal.
That's Officer Bachelor, he's here for...
Well, you never know.
We don't know.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, right? Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throg Martin.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throg Martin.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 17, sidewalk retailing permit. This is an ordinance amending Title 10 entitled Public Ways and Property, Chapter 3 entitled Commercial Use of Sidewalks, to provide for sidewalk retailing every day from March through October. This is second consideration, but staff request expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throg Martin.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throg Martin.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 18, council compensation. This is an ordinance amending Title 1 Administration, Chapter 5, City Council, Section 3, compensation of the city code to increase the salary and health insurance benefit of the mayor and the members of the city council effective January the first, 2020. This is second consideration. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Cole, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
Yeah, I'm going to just quickly, this may be just the second or third time in the nine years on council that I've changed my vote, and we've had multiple votes. I voted yes on this before, and I've struggled with this since we started the discussion. I'm not convinced that this makes a difference in terms of low-income residents being able to run for council, and I've expressed those views before. And so I'll just, we're getting late, I'll just say I'm going to vote against it.
Anyone else?
I voted against it, but not for that reason. I think, you know, it could be encouraging and everything, but I really want to see, you know, first, I can vote for it if the city like really increase the minimum wage for the city employee to $15 an hour. I want to see that first. I want to see we're doing something for the city first. After that, we can think about ourselves. But now voting no for this, but, you know, yes, my voting no is really different than Susan Mims. That's why I want to be clear.
Okay, any further discussion?
I just want to say that I do believe that it does help individuals, encourage individuals that have lesser means. If you're, I mean, I understand some, you know, maybe once I'm a veteran on council, some of my opportunities in meeting with people in the community, maybe that will dwindle down and it may not feel like it's a full-time job on some weeks. But I honestly believe that this compensation would allow someone the opportunity to reduce their hours at work, to come to council, and, you know, middle to, you know, someone who really has those financial needs, financial needs. So I'm not voting really for myself, but really for the opportunity for other individuals that, right now, they could not leave their job, and if they didn't have any supplemental income from the council. And the other thing is that cities across, in Iowa and across the nation, you know, do compensate, and this is in comparison, very reasonable and compensation for city council.
I guess for the benefit of whoever might be watching on TV, I want to repeat a few points I made during our last meeting, and then present just a little bit more information. So first of all, we discussed this during our October the second work session, and then again during our formal meeting on November the sixth, where we had our first vote on this. The changes were proposed primarily for three reasons. The first is to enable more people in the community to consider serving on the city council. The second is, was to bring our salaries more in line with other large cities in the state, and we had ample data supporting that observation, that it would be appropriate for us to do that. And the third was to provide council members with greater flexibility in accessing health insurance for themselves and their families. So we had background data that Jeff provided us about what other mayors and council members are paid in the 10 largest cities in the state, plus Coralville, North Liberty, and we used that and came up with the numbers that we're drawing upon now. The other bit of information I want to introduce is that this is the first substantial change in city council and mayoral salaries since 1997. In 1997, the council increased the salary of the council members by $500 to $5,512. And it's been increased just in, consistent with, I don't know, what do you call it? Inflation. Basically, there was one moment when it was, what did you tell me? One moment when the council froze the compensation for city council members because of the flood and related things. Not the flood, because of the big recession, the great recession. So this is really a first time in 20 years that we've considered increasing salaries other than just by inflation. So I feel completely comfortable voting for this again. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, hearing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throg Martin.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
No.
Saleh.
No.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Motion carries five to two. Item 19, Creekside Market Tobacco Penalty. This is a resolution assessing $1,500 civil penalty against Creekside Market. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Saleh. Is this what you wanted to address? No.
Yes.
If you, yes.
Yeah, sure.
I said, yes.
Just state your name, please.
My name is Paul Bachelor. I am...
Thanks, Paul.
...a sergeant with the Iowa City Police Department, and one of my peripheral duties as a supervisor is to oversee our tobacco compliance program in conjunction with the Alcohol and Beverage Division. So through this program, we utilize kids age 16 or 17. We have very well-established protocols, safety mechanisms in place, but we give them money, have them go into anywhere in the city of Iowa City that sells tobacco products or vape products, and have them attempt to make a purchase. The person is told they have to use their regular identification. If they're asked how old they are, they have to tell them. There's nothing deceptive or anything in place. So on December 7th, 2017, at about 7:30 PM, we did a check at the Creekside Market. The employee walked in, asked for a tobacco product. The employee immediately sold it to him without asking for any identification or making any reasonable attempt to ascertain the person's age. This particular underage person that we were utilizing was 16 years old. And anyway, the sale was completed, the person walked out, provided the tobacco to the officers. We then entered the store, identified ourselves, informed the employee that we were doing a tobacco compliance check, and that they had failed that check. The employee was then issued a citation. Appears the employee later pled not guilty and was found guilty in a court of law on January 22nd of 2018.
I just want to ask you, the 17 or 16 years old that you goes, yeah, like he looks 17, he looks 16?
Correct. This particular kid is 16 years old, and he looked about exactly 16. We try and avoid a kid that's 16 that has a beard down the hair and that type of thing.
Like, look like 18 or...
Yeah, we just get an average-looking 16 or 17-year-old.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah.
Good question.
Is there a reason that this, if that went to trial like back in January, is there a reason that this isn't coming to us until November?
We are catching up, because you remember that the county attorney's office was doing this for us when Andy Chappell was there, and when he was appointed to the bench, it languished for a little while, and then we took it over. And so there'll be some old ones here for a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a little confused why, or how, it went from $195 on the citation, and then, you know, in the resolution, it talks about, you know, $300 civil penalty, and then, I'm a little confused why, why is that 1,500?
So the criminal charge against the employee who sold the tobacco is what Sergeant Bachelor was talking about. This is a civil penalty that the state law provides against the owner of the store when they have an employee that's been convicted.
Okay.
You mean that it's too charged?
There's a criminal charge against the employee, but retailers are expected to train and educate their employees about the process you need to go through when you sell tobacco, and if they don't do that, and in this case, this is a second time for this retailer, and so the civil penalty has increased.
Oh, you mean if it was the first time, the citation will go to the employee only 300?
No. The citation always goes, the criminal citation always goes to the employee who actually sells the cigarettes. But there are graduated penalties against the retailer, against the business owners. So the first time, it's 300 or, I think, and then the second time, it's 1,500 or a suspension. Eventually gets up to revocation of their, of their permit to sell cigarettes.
Okay, thank you.
So we see a difference here between civil offenses and criminal offenses, right? And in the case of the criminal offense, that's mandated by state law, is it not?
It's a state code provision.
Yeah, because I'm thinking about a young person, presumably, I don't know who the employee is actually that was selling stuff, and now that person has a criminal record, right, for selling cigarettes to a minor?
Correct. It's a simple misdemeanor.
Okay, so it doesn't...
A scheduled citation, similar to a traffic citation.
Okay, good. That's pretty much what I was hoping to hear. Okay, thanks. Further discussion among council members? Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Throg Martin.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 20, council appointments. So we have several. In the Board of Adjustment, we have one vacancy to fill a five-year term, and we have, what, two applicants for that term. It's a female requirement. One of the two applicants is a female. I could do the math. Do you have any objection to appointing Amy Pretorius?
No.
No.
All right, so Amy. All right, I'm going to skip Human Rights Commission for a second, just because. So let's go to the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have, what, six applicants to fill two, three-year terms with one male requirement, one no requirement. So do you have any preference about who should be appointed to the male position, to the male requirement position, or not appoint anybody to that till sometime in January? I think I'm tracking that correctly.
Well, I think, I mean, we certainly have two applicants. I find myself in a quandary about this one because our policy tends to be to give, try to give new people an opportunity. Clay Claussen has been on there before, he's been off for a year. When I read the other application, I didn't see any passion or strong sense of attraction to Parks and Rec. It was more just kind of wanting to get involved. So kind of contrary to that idea of putting new people on, I just think Clay would be better in terms of that male representative. But I certainly understand if people feel differently on that.
I understand your hesitation, but I would be really wary of reappointing, or not literally reappointing Clay, but he's a terrific guy and has done good service for that particular commission for a long time. But it was only 10 months ago that we did not reappoint him for the reason you've just mentioned.
I think he's been off for a year. I think he was off last...
Well, maybe it was December, I don't know. So I think it'd be a mistake to appoint Clay, given how much, how long he served before that. And he was chair for quite a few years, too, is the way I remember it. So I don't know what the rest of you think, but if we chose not to appoint either individual, we could re-advertise? Is that right? Would that be the way to proceed?
Because they need a man. You could.
Yeah, we have two male applicants, and there's a one male requirement, unless we don't get any, I don't know...
I think Lucas is a viable candidate, though. I mean, he's a graduate student.
Yes.
I think, you know, having youthful energy, you know, he hasn't really served on anything related to this in the past. So I think having that, you know, new lenses is always a good opportunity. I mean, I do, I hear Susan, where she says that experience, I think that that has a lot to do with why you would want someone on a, on a commission, but I also think, you know, looking, listening to the mayor, and I think overall, what I've heard council in past videos, when I've seen what council has done, it's really given new people opportunity. And, you know, so I think for that reason, I would probably select Lucas.
Yeah, I'm fine with Lucas. Maz, you were nodding your head, too, right?
I agree. I liked what he said in his application. He said, "to maximize the quality of life for its residents through accessibility and equity of Parkland in the area." I thought he had a really good idea of what the Parks and Rec could be about. I appreciate the service that Clayton's had, but we've been trying, per guidance, to try to set a precedent here of not reappointing or trying to get some, some new people in there. But I see no problem with Lucas. We need one male, one nun, so...
Yeah, seems like there's clear support for Lucas Fusch. Angie Smith is currently serving an unexpired term. I would think we'd want to reappoint her to continue that. Any objections to that?
No.
No.
Okay, and the Public Art Advisory Committee. Notice I'm skipping the one that has 40 applicants.
Yes. Yes.
The Public Art Advisory Committee, we have four applicants to fill one unexpired term and one three-year term. There's a one male requirement, one nun.
I guess Edward, yeah.
I would suggest we appoint Ed Boykin to the three-year term.
I agree. He was my pick.
I'd agree.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. So, Ed Boykin. Okay, and, let's see. All right, we need to appoint one other person. I think, what, Nancy Purington, Andrea Truitt, and Katie Wilson all look eminently qualified. I have a slight preference for Andrea Truitt, but it's, there's real good reason to do any of the three, so...
Andrea was mine. Like you said, they all are good, but I had highlighted Andrea, just because of her experience, her volunteer experience with some of the arts and a good knowledge of the committee.
I would go Andrea, too.
Andrea.
Okay, it sounds like we have chosen Andrea. Senior Center of Commission, we have three applicants to fill one three-year term. It's a female requirement. The three are Kathleen Crawford, well, it doesn't matter, there are three applicants. Two of them are women, one is a man. So, and one of them, one of the women, is currently serving the end of an unexpired term. This is Kathleen Dorfman, I'm sorry, Lorraine Dorfman, excuse me. So I would suggest we reappoint her to a full term.
Yes.
I'd agree.
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 All right, this is the point where I'm going to throw up my hands and say I don't have a clue. So we have 40 applicants for, how many, for three three-year terms on the Human Rights Commission. One female requirement, one male, one nun.
Well, to get the male one out of the way, as we've just done in terms of reappointing people, some of these are to partial terms. Frequently, we have given people that opportunity to have a second term, and Adele Adams is finishing his first term, so...
Speaking about what you said about new opportunity, I think we can also give new people opportunity.
We can, I mean, but we oftentimes have given somebody at least a second term. We haven't always, but we certainly have with a partial. If they're doing a partial, we'll give them a full one. Oftentimes, we give them a second one, not always. So I think he's been...
I don't know, I was trying to say like Muhammad, Ahmed Al Mahdi, just like because I really like diversity on the committees, and, you know, both of them are Muslim, and we need their voice to be in.
So, you know, on those, on that topic, Maz, I was, I was looking at the information we have in one of, one of the charts for these various commissions, and I was looking at the Human Rights Commission and looking at the types of diversity displayed on that chart. And I was thinking, I mean, I'm going to suggest something that we cannot, that we're not required to do by law, and it's not something we should do sort of thoughtlessly, but it's something to consider. I think on this commission, it's good to have somebody who is gay or lesbian or otherwise in the LGBTQ community, someone who's a Muslim, someone who is a person with disability, excuse me, a person with a disability.
Yes.
An African-American individual, a Sudanese immigrant, I mean, there's this range of things, and it's a real challenge to have that particular commission take on all the challenges having to do with diversity and human rights and everything. But I think it's good to try to mix people.
Exactly. But speaking to your band, I really, you know, I select my three people, and all of them will say, like, really saying the same thing that you just said, like Naomi Ford. She is an immigrant from Hungary, she being like really interact with immigration and all this, she's great. I, you know, I know her personally, I saw her everywhere. She always like this one. And also Zach Roster, he is also, you know, gay, and he is a student of the University of Iowa, which is bringing student voice. You know, those two people, I really being, seeing them very active in the community, and also they're going to bring, like, some kind of, yeah. And that's why, and I said the Muslim, that the last one would be the Muslim, which is Muhammad Ahmed Al Mahdi Taha. That's what I was really thinking.
I had Naomi Ford as one of my female candidates.
Sure.
I had like four of them, but she was, she was one of them that I had marked.
So, are there any objections to appointing Naomi Ford? It is Naomi, right?
Yes, Naomi.
Yeah.
I would support Naomi Ford.
Is it N-O-A-M-I? Because that's the way it's spelled.
N-O-E-M-I, yeah. But Naomi.
I would support that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're clear about her.
Muhammad Ahmed, I would support him.
I don't know Muhammad. I trust your all's advice. Again, I throw my hands up.
My impression is, of Adil is, he's come to our meetings before. He seems very interested, and he participates in that committee. His attendance is excellent on that, and so I would almost go along with Susan as far as giving him a chance to have another term.
Oh, Adil?
Yeah, Adil.
Yeah, I'm okay with Adil if people want to go that way.
I just want to give, like, the thing is the passionate of immigrant to trying to join, like, some, you know, committees. We don't see that a lot. I don't see, like, a lot of immigrant come forward, say, "Hey, we want to do this." And that's why, as much as we can give new people chance to come forward and just try to serve would be great. So, we have more, especially for immigrant, I mean. We can, because we are not going to select all of them immigrants, you know, we need, like, one, so we can have the diversity. That's why I'm saying, give Muhammad Ahmed a chance to come, you know, forward and do this.
Since this is, oh, sorry. The Human Rights Commission, I mean, is a very desired commission. And so, I wonder if, you know, looking at, I think there's some validity to ensuring that someone has a full term, and maybe it's just one full term and not a, you know, not a second full term, because this commission, people really do want to be a part of, and so I don't know if that is something that can help guide our, if that's of any interest to help guide our decision. Like, this is really a higher-desired commission.
So, what does that mean?
What does that mean? That we may not reappoint?
Exactly. Because a lot of people want to serve on this commission. Look at them, 40 people. If we're going to, like, reappoint people all the time, that means we are not going to give all those 40 a chance to serve.
Well, I think on that note, I'd like to thank every one of these 40 applicants for even going through. And some of them are older, if you look on the date, some of them that applied previously, but we keep their applications on file until, you know, there's an opening. So, I mean, I commend every one of them because almost every one of them in their applications talked about their passion for human rights. I mean, the word passion came up many times, and so they have a good idea and a good knowledge, especially ones, immigrants, I mean, not just the Muslims, which is wonderful, but I highlighted here, there's Korean, Asian, Indian, South Korea, from all over the, all over the country. We have folks in African-American, gay, blacks.
Yes.
So, who are we going to pick?
It's such a variety.
So, yeah.
It's wonderful. So, but, you know, I, yeah, so now I'm confused, but I think because I do--
Let me focus things in a little bit.
Right.
We need to fill three positions. One female, one male, one none.
It's hard. It's tough.
We got Naomi down.
We got Naomi down. So, that, there's the one female. All right, so we have, we have to fill two more positions. One should be a male, the other doesn't matter. Okay, so we have heard so far four names, but one we've already addressed, Naomi Ford. So, the other names we've heard are Zachary Rochester, Muhammad Taha, and Adil Adams. Are there other names that anybody wants to put out there? And they're all surely good people, so that's not the point, but--
I think Ann Cradie was strong. I think Jessica Furtig was strong.
I thought Furtig was strong.
And I think Carolyn Garsky was strong.
Yes.
I guess said Zach because he's a student and, you know, and also he's from, like, transgender and, that's what I think, if you want really the diversity there.
And when you say he, you mean Muhammad?
No.
No.
Zach.
Oh, right, Zach.
Yeah, and Muhammad is just going to bring the Muslim piece to this group, you know, and also, you know, immigrants.
I had--
I would support Jessica Furtig.
I was personally impressed with Jessica Furtig, but I only got about halfway through the West, so.
We got three for Furtig. Do we have another one?
Well, Karen, Susan mentioned Caroline, and I had her highlighted, a student, 23 years old, and she again had mentioned being passionate about human rights and social justice and equity for all. She seemed to have very good knowledge of the board.
I get my understanding now, since we're saying we don't want to give everybody the votes at once.
Tough.
I do support him.
All right, I'm going to go through names and see if there are four people in favor of particular individuals, and if there are, we'll appoint that person and move ahead. So, Zachary Rochester, it's just sort of raise your hand if you're, if you're support appointing Zachary Rochester.
Are we only getting one vote?
Well, I'm just going to run through this one time, and then we'll probably have to do it again, frankly. So, I see two for sure. Okay? All right, we'll see. I can't write on this, can I? So, all right, Muhammad Taha.
Muhammad, yeah.
Definitely two, okay. Adil Adams, definitely three.
And he's served before, correct?
He's filling--
Full or partial?
Sorry?
Was he a full or did he--
I think he's a part, serving an unexpired first. That's the way I'm remembering it.
I believe he did come in partway.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not looking at you to get an answer, Eleanor. Don't worry about that. Okay, Ann Crada.
Oh, yes.
One. Jessica Furtig.
Jessica, I bet John would like that.
I see three hands up for Jessica Furtig. Okay, there's three. And Caroline Garsky.
Yeah, I can support Caroline.
One, okay.
Two. I mean, I voted for more than--
Well, I heard two people get three votes. I don't know if this is the best way to do this, but let's do it. So, Jessica Furtig was one, and who was the other?
Adil.
Adil, Adil Adams. So, is there support, majority support for appointing--
I would support Adil. Adil also is Muslim and immigrant as well as, so let's reappoint Adil. That gives us four, right?
So, you make--
I don't know, let's find out. So, that's one, two, three, four.
If you're saying that he only did a partial, then I would support him.
Okay.
Or a full.
Any way to find out? It probably says in the, in the document somewhere.
And I was looking to see if it--
It should say there if his name appears.
It should be, or here.
I'd support Adil.
Who else did? I did.
His application might say--
We got three--
Well, there are four, but anyhow, but Bruce's--
Okay. Adil's application says that he was a member for three years.
Okay, so--
He doesn't give the term, though, but--
And three years is the term.
Yes. So, do we have four with him? Did you support him?
I would take my vote back if he, if he's already served one.
I think there are four votes.
Yep, there are four.
Three of you and Pauline.
And Pauline, okay.
Okay.
So, we've got four then for Adil.
All right, and then we had three votes for Jessica Furtig also. Is there majority support for appointing Jessica Furtig? I'll throw my support behind Jessica.
Go Jessica.
I support Jessica.
We got four.
I think that's four.
We got four.
Who's the last one, Jessica?
Jessica Furtig.
Jessica Furtig. Okay, so we appointed Jessica Furtig. Adil Adams?
I should be scared.
Huge.
Can we go?
All right. So, I, hold on, everybody, time is, return to the fold, okay?
She's lucky we're all--
So, I need a motion to appoint Amy Pretorius to the Board of Adjustment, Lucas Fusch, and Angie Smith to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Ed Boykin, and Andrea Truitt to the Public Art Advisory Committee.
Qualifying the Ed Boykin will be the three-year term, and Andrea Truitt will be filling the partial term. Thank you.
Agreed. Lorraine Dorfman to the Senior Center Commission, and then Naomi Ford, Adil Adams, and Jessica Furtig to the Human Rights Commission.
So moved.
Second.
By mems, seconded by coal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 21, announcement of vacancies. These are previous announcements. There's one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Airport Zoning Commission, two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term, oh, no, one vacancy to fill, yeah, to fill a five-year term on the Board of Appeals, HVAC, or building professional position. One vacancy to fill a three-year term on, for the East College Street position of the Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for the Jefferson Street District, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Telecommunications Commission. Vacancies for these positions will remain open until filed. Item 22, community comment.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah.
What brings you here?
I don't know. I just spend my evenings here. Okay, sounds good. My name's Gustav Stewart, student liaison. The only thing that I'm pretty much going to say is that next week is, at least university students are putting on it, it's on Us Week. And if you don't know what it's on Us is, it's a nationwide initiative to basically spread awareness and prevention on sexual assault-related things. So, there, I know there's going to be numerous events and some social media presence, so if you see, that, that's kind of what it's about. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. All right. City Council information. Maybe we could start with Maz and move to the right.
Nothing to report. Yes.
All right. Rockney?
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
John? Nothing from me.
Just really quickly, had the opportunity to go to Hancher a week or so ago to go to the Soweto Choir. Absolutely fantastic event.
Pauline?
I think Bruce had mentioned the city employee lunch. That was, that was a wonderful event, and I found it interesting because most of the initial employees that came were from the transit, so I took the opportunity to just chat with them a little bit about upcoming evaluation, and hopefully they'll be given input into the whole survey, et cetera. This past Saturday, I had the honor and pleasure to give a welcoming message to the CFA Cat Show, the Cat Fancers Association, because everybody knows I'm a cat lady, and so in lieu of the mayor, I offered to do that. And it just showed me that Iowa City truly is becoming a gathering place for people with many interests. I mean, we've had some, we've hosted so many groups, the City of Literature, the bicyclists, ragbri, cyclocross, wrestling. So, this was really nice to be able to include our four-legged friends and the folks that mean a lot to these animals. Also met people from all across the country. You could have done the little license plate game in the parking lot, because there were Kansas, and Missouri, and Nebraska, Illinois, Minnesota, Michigan, Indiana, and all across Iowa, of course, too, so. So, that was, that was really fun. That was nice. And they commented that the Corleville Visitors Bureau was very helpful. The directors of that said that they were very helpful in helping get a site and get hotels, et cetera. So, that was good to hear. And they're hoping to come back next year, which is good. Upcoming things, December 2nd, the retirement party for Susan Craig is at the Iowa City Library. I think that's a Sunday, on Sunday afternoon, 1:00 or 2:00. And also then, on that note, would like to give the shout-out welcome to the new director, Ellsworth Carmen, I believe is his name. So, that's good, and I think that's it.
Bruce?
So, Iowa City Red Week, this is, it'd be a series of HIV, HIV/AIDS public awareness programming that have been coming to Iowa City, and that's going to be November 26th through December 1st. There will be reading of names on November 30th, and it is encouraged for local government and other individuals within our community to take part in the reading of names as a symbolic effort of ending stigma and bringing awareness during the World's AIDS Day. And there's other things that they have going on, like AIDS Memorial Quote showing, and that's going to be at the Old Capitol Museum. So, there's lots of things going around for that event, and I would just say, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Excellent. I'll mention a few things. At first, it's something I meant to bring up back when we were discussing appointments. A couple weeks ago, I was talking to one of our state legislators, and she told me that she had recently been informed that we were deficient in appointing minority members to our boards and commissions. She couldn't provide any further details, said she was going to look, check it out, and that kind of thing. I was surprised, told her I was surprised and all that. So, I don't know if her report was correct, but I am hoping someone could follow up and report back. And the person is Mary Mashur. I'm not trying to hide her name, but just reach out to Mary and see if she can identify the report, has any more information to provide, and if we're, you know, in violation somehow, we want to know it. So, that's one thing. I also recently completed that three-day trip to Los Angeles for the National League of Cities meeting, the city summit, and among other things, I had really fruitful conversations with members of Ames' council, City Council, and the mayor of Ames. John knows there's a photograph of John Hale and me. And also with the mayor of Otumla, Tom Lazio, and his wife Peg. That was really fun, and I reached out to Tom and said, "Hey, I'd love to come down to your city, probably in the spring, and give you a chance to just kind of show me around, and let me see all the things you like, you know, things are going well in your city and you're proud of, and that I'd be really happy to return the favor." So, I was really hopeful about that, just as one connection with somebody outside of here. On the 12th of November, I was in prison again, yet again, this time to witness the Soweto Gospel Choir sing with the Oakdale Community Choir in an afternoon concert. And I can tell you, it was the most emotionally powerful, inspiring, moving thing I've ever seen. It was really stunning, and part of it had to do with the profound intimacy of it. You're in, remember, we're in prison, right? And in prison, we have this big crowd watching the people up there, sort of onstage, and then they all came down and mingled with us. So, the choir, the Soweto Gospel Choir members, there's one of them on my right, there's one of them right over there, one over there, and others dispersed around, and they're guiding us through the song that involves a lot of movement, which is pretty hard for a dude, for a dunce like me, you know, and we're moving and all this stuff. And the faces were so, so moving to look at, and their voices, oh my God. And you saw the, you know, not the uniforms, the dresses in attire. I didn't get a chance to see that, but I heard they were fabulous.
Yeah.
Yeah, so wow.
It was wonderful.
Now, I'm counting on you, Bruce, given your voice and ability to perform, you know, to top that. Yeah, so anyhow, there's that. And I also want to mention that, just a couple other things here. Employee Appreciation Lunch that we went to on the 15th, that was really fun. I had an excellent meeting with Kim Casco, Nancy Byrd, Mark Nolte, and other members of ICAD staff on the 16th, and we focused mainly on what inclusive economic development could mean here, and what the components of it might be. It was, I think everybody was listening, and everybody's trying to explore that topic. So, it was pleasing to do. Yesterday, I went, visited with former mayor Darrell Courtney, is, you know, in the casket out at First Christian Church in Corleville. There are a lot of people there, you know, a stream of people coming in and going out. But I wanted to make sure that, you know, somebody from Iowa City government was there paying him and his wife Cynthia respects. Last, I'll be reading names on World's AIDS, AIDS Day, World's, can't talk, World AIDS Day, November the 30th, in front of the Pentecost. That'll be fun. That's it for me. Maz?
Can I just say one thing? I just would like really to congratulate publicly Royce Ann Porter for winning the nomination by the Democratic Party.
Oh, Royce Ann won that nomination.
Yes.
Congratulations, Royce Ann.
Absolutely.
Jeff?
Nothing.
Ashley? Eleanor? Damn.
Move to adjourn.
All right. Motion by mems, seconded by T.